Good evening and welcome to tonight's public hearing on the FY 2015 advertised budget. On behalf of the school board members, I would like to thank you for taking time this evening to come and talk to us about FY 2015 advertised budget. If you have not already done so, please provide your written comments to a staff member at the entrance of auditorium and please turn off or silence your cell phones. Tonight, we have a 50 registered speakers. Each speaker is allotted three minutes and to be respectful of everyone, we ask that you stay within that time limit. The deputy clerk will start the time when you begin to speak and you will be able to see the time remaining on the clock on the left turn. The buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes. For those of you who have signed up for one of the five reserved speaker slots this evening, your name will be called after registered speakers. There will also be an opportunity for individuals to speak if there are no show speaker slots remaining at the end of the hearing. After all the registered speakers have addressed the board, I will announce whether there are any no-show slots available. For this, we ask that you state your full name at the time you speak. After you have spoken, please see the deputy clerk so that she may collect your contact information for the record. I'll be calling three names at a time. When your names are called, if you could all move to the front closer to the podium left turn, I will appreciate that so that we can move along. The first speaker is Riley Bendyward to be followed by Riker Bendyward and Maya Spoto. Riley Bendyward? Is there a Maya Spoto? Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Maya Spoto and I am a seventh grader at Kilmer Middle School. I'm here to urge you to prioritize healthy school start times for the 2014-15 school year in your budget talks this winter. Allow me to paint a picture of my typical weekday morning. I wake up at 6:10 with a sour stomach. This is late compared to my Cooper friends in the neighborhood. Their bus comes 20 minutes earlier. When I board the bus at 6:45, one of my best friends is already crying, slumped in the seat in front of me and texting her mom almost the entire 45-minute ride. I've eaten the best breakfast that I can, granola, but my stomach continues to protest. Most of the time, my friends and I are in a fog for the first three periods. It's tough to learn Algebra I honors in a fog. Throughout the first semester, I've been taken out of class several times to help my other best friend cope with stress and anxiety problems related to exhaustion. She has spent entire days crying in the guidance office, too tired to muster up the courage to go to class. Don't misunderstand, my friends are two of the most energetic, optimistic, and enthusiastic people that I know. They used to love school. They have no problem being in middle school. They're just too tired to cope. We are all trying our best to get to sleep at a reasonable hour, but regardless of how tired I am, my body won't let me fall asleep. I go to bed at nine, but it can take me up to two hours to doze off. If this is happening now, what will happen to us when the Langley bus carts us off at 6:08? One of my friends is applying to private schools, but that's not an option for all of us. I know that some people are afraid of losing time in their afternoons for homework and sports. I can't speak for everyone, but I'm a dancer. And living near the border of Loudoun County, my studio has to wait for the Loudoun kids to get out of school. So I'm not dancing any earlier just because school lets out sooner. It's the opposite. Now I'm dancing late, falling asleep late because my blood is pumping so hard, and waking up early. Some other sports have working coaches who aren't available at 3:00 PM when school lets out, so the kids wait, stay up late for practice or games, and wake up early. You could consider shortening the day if people are afraid of losing afternoon time or lightening homework loads, or truly limiting practice times across the county. There are a lot of ways to make healthy start times work, so please make this change now. And please don't ignore Langley just because people are afraid of the traffic that can occur on Georgetown Pike in the morning. We are the traffic. Once again, please put healthy start times first in your budget priorities. If we're half asleep all day, how can we possibly learn to our fullest potential?
Thank you. The next speaker is Catherine Purnell-Lee to be followed by Alex Glassman and Elena
Good evening. My name is Catherine Purnell and I'm in eighth grade at Lake Braddock Secondary. I am here today to discuss with you the need for later start times for secondary schools. As research has shown, teen sleep patterns cause them to begin to fall asleep later and in turn wake up later the next morning. However, the current schedules for schools arouse the need for them to wake up between 5:00 and 6:30 every morning to get to school on time. They end up getting around seven hours of sleep per night when the daily recommendation is eight or nine. I know from experience that this then causes us all to feel drowsy and not pay attention as well during morning classes. It especially becomes hard when homework piles up, causing us all to get to bed later and creating a spiral of sleepiness until the weekend. Overall, it does not create a healthy environment for learning. I understand that there are some concerns on how this will affect the timing of buses in elementary schools, but there have been some low-cost and no-cost options that have been proposed so far. We can also follow the examples of other counties as we are one of the last places to improve our start times. In addition, this could save money used for mediation and summer school classes, as well as lessen the amount of time used to repeat curriculum in class due to tired and poorly functioning students who just aren't fully functioning and ready to learn at 7:00 in the morning. These early start times are already costing FCPs as it is, if not in monetary value, but in the well-being of its students. This is still part of our childhood and we don't need to be exhausted for the duration of it. There doesn't have to be an increased number of teen car accidents or a higher risk of depression. Now is the time to act and put the well-being of students at the forefront of the FCPs budget. Now is the time to do something that will really benefit the learning of every student in seventh grade or higher. We need to help kids during an important part of their education. All in all, student health shouldn't be a side effect of the budget. It should be the main idea. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alex Glassman to be followed by Elena Brown and Erica Barton.
To Dr. Garza and distinguished school board members, my name is Alex Glassman. I'm a seventh grader at Longfellow Middle School and I am wearing yellow today to support COTTS kids who are in public school system. I have nowhere to turn. The budget is a moral document and the budget should reflect our values. Most of all, most, if not all, of my homework is on the computer. I can only imagine what happens to the underprivileged child who doesn't have a computer in their home. We need to make sure we close the digital divide. I also see the budget does not allocate money for summer school, nor does it address the lack of minority students taking advanced academics by helping kids in pre-K. I am mainly here to testify in support of budget that supports later start times for middle and high schoolers. I must admit, I fell asleep in one of my classes. I have to wake up when it is dark outside. I try to make up sleep during the weekend. One year ago, I never had a problem being tired in class. A few short months later, now I have a problem. My mom encourages me to go to bed on time, but it is still very difficult to get up in the morning. While sleep is important for people of all ages, it may be extra important for teens. The National Sleep Foundation notes that teens need to get at least 9.25 hours of sleep each night. And getting inadequate sleep at night can hinder their ability to learn and retain information at school, as well as deal with stress. This coincides with the findings of Dr. Judy Owens, the person that you commissioned. I would like to thank school board Megan McGlocken, school board member Sandy Evans, and school board member Tammy Kofax for your support and encouraging words. Thank you for being an advocate for students who want to perform well at school academically, but not only need an extra hour of sleep. During Dr. Owens' study, she said all of the schools they studied, not one wanted to go back to their early start time. Putting money in the budget to help support later school start times is paramount and desperately needed. Absent doing this only contributes to chewancy, tardiness, lack of focus and attention in class, and direct correlation to closing, and ultimately kids being unenthused about school. Later start times means that kids are alert and this has a direct correlation to closing the achievement gap. Seventy-two of 95 counties in Virginia start at 8:00 AM or after. I urge you to consider the budget for this fiscal year that closes this debate. Start school later in September of 2014 this year. Thank you.
The next speaker is Elena Brown to be followed by Erica Barton and Stuart Orloff.
Hi, my name is Elena Brown and I'm a ninth grader at Lake Braddock Secondary School. I'm here today to talk about some of us that have and also some of those who don't have. I came here to Virginia from South Carolina six years ago. My parents, whom I trust very much, chose Fairfax County because they liked the schools here. They told my sister and I that the schools in Fairfax County are some of the best schools in the nation. The teachers care about us and they work hard to help us learn what we need to learn. I have friends from many countries such as Eritreans, Vietnamese, Ecuadorians, and many more. We use several textbooks and recently started using electronic textbooks. I like the electronic ones because they are easy to search and find something and they provide additional information right there when I need it. It is also good that I don't need to carry it around since it is online. This is a great way for us, for us who have the access to the internet at home, to get study time. But I have friends that don't have access to the internet at home. Their parents cannot provide basic needs, let alone computers. They don't want anyone to know that they are poor, but we know. In fact, we know some of the students that are homeless. They don't have a home and don't have access to the internet, which makes it very difficult for them to even do homework. So if they don't have access to the internet at home, how can they get access to an electronic book which shows vital information in it? Although there are low-income students at Lake Braddock, I don't believe there are that many. But there are other places like Alexandria and other areas in Virginia that have many more poor students. Many of these students may not have access to the internet at home, and I don't believe it is fair that they may get bad grades because they can't do their homework because they don't have access to the internet at home.
The next speaker is Erica Barton to be followed by Stuart Orloff and Kimberly Adams.
Hello, my name is Erica. I am currently an eighth grade student at Kilmer Middle School. I wanted to speak about two topics tonight. My experience in elementary school with large class sizes and my concern about our current early school start times. I had been in several extremely large classes while I was at Forestville Elementary. In the fourth grade, I had 29 kids in my classroom. In the fifth, I had 33. And by the sixth grade, there were 38 kids in my classroom. I didn't even have a chair to sit in the first couple weeks of sixth grade. I sat on my desk. My teachers were good, but were not able to effectively teach all 38 of us and give us enough of their time. I made no improvement with my writing, but I received As without much comment. Oral reports for the class would nearly take four days of class time. There was little challenge as the teacher's attention was always elsewhere. The exception was my sixth grade math class, which had 22 students. We moved faster with the smaller group and my teacher was able to introduce some advanced topics that really helped me in the seventh grade at Kilmer. I enjoyed the class and the teacher so much, and that's why I looked forward to going to school. The rest was just tedious and held little inspiration for me. I hope that when you make your decisions about the budget, you will consider how much the large class sizes really impacts actual learning and the desire to learn. I also wanted to share my concern about the early school start times for middle and high school. Currently, my middle school bus picks up the kids in our neighborhood between 6:20 AM and 6:50 AM. I get up at 5:55 to get ready for school. The high school bus in my neighborhood comes even earlier than 6:00 AM, so I will be getting up by 5:20 AM next year. I know that I need to be in bed early enough to get a good night's sleep, but it's a struggle to compete with all my homework every night after sports and other extracurricular activities by an early bedtime. I am tired at school and completely exhausted by Fridays. I don't even feel like I am performing as well as I could be. The later school start times would definitely make a huge difference for me. Thank you for listening.
Next speaker is Stuart Orloff to be followed by Kimberly Adams and Kevin Hickerson.
Hi, I'm Stuart Orloff and I'm in 10th grade. School is a great idea. Sure, there are flaws, but it's an important part of growing up. The problem is, I'm only half awake to experience it. In class, I can hardly focus because I'm trying too hard to stay awake. I know Fairfax County is high achieving, but imagine if students were allowed to sleep in an extra hour. We would be more alert, focused, and positive in school. I know that students who sleep later are less likely to participate in risky behaviors. Adults worry it will cost too much money, but I wasn't aware that putting a price on students' health and well-being was a goal for our school system. The benefits of healthier, more alert students will far outweigh the costs. Those who say getting home later will cut down on family time don't have any homework. I know it's healthier and more beneficial for me to sleep later. I hope you feel the same way. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kimberly Adams to be followed by Kevin Hickerson and Allison Berry.
Good evening Chairman Moon, members of the school board, and Dr. Garza. My name is Kimberly Adams and I am here on behalf of the members of the Fairfax Education Association. I am the president of our union, but I also am the parent of a kindergarten student and a toddler, the spouse of a sixth grade teacher, and yes, we are taxpayers in Fairfax County. And I would say that I am highly vested in the schools in our community. The Fairfax Education Association supports the budget before you. We believe that it is the best mix of options to address the difficult fiscal reality confronting all of you. Tough financial times over half a decade have challenged this county, state, and country, and we understand. That being said, we don't love this budget. Increases in class size are detrimental to the learning and opportunities of our students. Differentiating instruction, communicating with parents, and building meaningful relationships with individual students becomes more and more challenging with each additional child in our classes. While one-half or even one more student doesn't really sound like much, if you work in a school, you know that budget number will translate to a bigger body count as teaching staff are eliminated. We are also concerned about the support positions being cut. Those instructional assistant, clerical, and custodial positions, they represent real work in our system. Be it running off materials, offering an additional hand with a student or group of students, our IIs are an integral part of their student and teacher successes. Clerical staff support the main office operations, library assistant functions, and work with all administrators and staff in the building. They are the front line of defense in a school, and they work together to make our days seamless. Our custodians are responsible for providing safe and clean learning environments in our schools. If they aren't there, who will do the work? We know you are aware of workload issues in our schools. Cutting positions without cutting the tasks only adds to the burden. The FEA supports the step increase that has been included in the budget. We believe this is a must-have. We know that the employees are the greatest assets you have and you must invest in us. Demonstrate that you understand the value of a high-quality workforce. Show us that you are committed to the children of this community by keeping the best and brightest in our schools. As Ted Velkoff said last week, "Please take that leap of faith and jump with the superintendent into the pool courageously." We applaud those of you who have supported putting a needs-based budget in front of our Board of Supervisors. FEA believes that the school board must present a budget that reflects the quality that we want to see maintained in our school system. This process calls for citizen participation, input and construction from you as a board, and then a decision by the Board of Supervisors. Let the community speak. We believe that they want what is right for our children and the future of our county. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Kevin Hickerson to be followed by Allison Berry and Precious Crabtree.
Good evening Superintendent Garza, Chairman Moon, and fellow school board members. I'm Kevin Hickerson, Vice President of the Fairfax Education Association. A few weeks ago, a budget was presented by the superintendent that showed a pragmatic approach to fixing the budget hole that Fairfax County schools is facing. The employees of the FCPs have shoulder the majority of the financial burden to fix problems for the past five budget cycles. We've endured class size increases, small market rate adjustments, health insurance rate increases, and no step increases in three out of four years. This budget, though, asked the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors to meet the school system halfway. What a novel concept. The Board of Supervisors would be investing in a school system that is a strong economic driver in this county. They would be investing in the success of our children that graduate from FCPs who are touted to businesses looking to set up shop in Fairfax. They would be investing with a step increase for FCPs employees who are trying to work as diligently as possible and survive financially in a county that is one of the richest in the nation. Yet it is not enough. There's more to cut according to the Board of Supervisors. And we won't get everything that we want according to Chairwoman Bulova. Well, I've got news for her. We haven't been getting what we want for the last five years. In fact, with the average 1% transfer over those five years, I can say that we've been barely keeping our head above water. The school board needs to work together as a team to put in plain and straight terms that the school system the county relies on to sell the idea that Fairfax County is a good place to live is in trouble. This is my 10th year in Fairfax, teaching in Fairfax County. I've spent those years teaching at Shantilly High School, and if I had my choice, I'd end my career there. I don't know if I can make it, though. My retirement aspirations are stretching further and further out. Every year, a step is not provided. I have lost close to $20,000 in earning over the last five years that will compound over the next 20-plus years. And I did the math, it's not on your sheet, I did the math, and it would cost 100, I'm losing $140,000 over those 20 years because of those steps that are not going to be replaced. The financial burden of living in this county on the salary afforded for the 10th-year teacher is not enough. That was illustrated to me when my wife and I had our first child this year. My daughter Hannah was born prematurely. And luckily, Fairfax County provides a service through infant and toddler connections to help us with making sure that she gets the best start possible. This service is scaled so that people who make more money pay a certain fee. Those who don't make a lot of money get it free of charge. Guess what? Two salaried FCPs employees end up on the scale. That's right, we don't pay a dime for the service. While I won't look a gift horse in the mouth and would be proud to pay if I could afford it, I find it strange that two employees of FCPs can be in this situation. Don't you?
Allison Berry to be followed by Precious Crabtree and Arthur Pervis.
Good evening Chairman Moon, members of the school board, and Dr. Garza. My name is Allison Berry and I'm speaking on behalf of the Fairfax Education Association as the Chair of the Educational Support Professionals Council. This is an extremely tough budget year, and I know that you will have to make some difficult decisions. The school system is more than just its students. It takes many employees in different positions to make the schools run smoothly. Tonight, I'm speaking specifically on behalf of the custodians, instructional assistants, and school-based technology specialists, the ESPTs, that will be affected by the proposed budget. The people in these positions are vital to the education of our students and cuts to these positions should be taken off the table. The custodians keep our schools clean and safe for our students, teachers, and members of their school communities. They are considered essential personnel and they report to schools on days that students and other staff members are at home. Custodians just don't clean the schools, but are involved and invested in their school. They are valued staff members in a building and often mentor students. The expectations of their jobs will not decrease just because their positions are reduced. They will be expected to continue keeping the high level of cleanliness and safety in our schools, but with fewer people to do the job, this puts undue stress on the custodians assigned to this task. Instructional assistants provide supports to teachers and other professional staff in a general or special education classroom and assist with the daily management of the students and classroom. They make it possible for the teachers to differentiate instruction by working one-on-one and with small groups. In addition, they make it possible for teachers to attend county meetings such as STACK, Superintendent Teachers Advisory Council, and local special education screening meetings by monitoring students in the classrooms. ESPTs are the technology leaders in the schools and provide valuable technology training to all staff members. They are the link that ensures that the technology you are funding is used effectively. In addition, they support central office initiatives and programs. ESPTs consult with teachers about the technologies to use in the curriculum. They assess teachers in using all aspects of eCart and Horizon as well as EDSL eCard. ESPTs prepare the teachers and students for online tests in eCart and are an integral part of the state-mandated SOL, Standards of Learning Assessments. ESPTs often work with students by modeling lessons, assisting with projects such as the fifth-grade Global Awareness Technology Project, Waterford Early Reading Program, Imagine Learning for the at-risk and ESOL students. Although the demands of the school system have increased year after year as our student enrollment has grown, Fairfax County Public Schools provides the best education for all students. This kind of quality comes at a price, but the returns vastly outweigh the alternatives. The FCPs budget is tight and reductions are being considered, but special care must be taken to fund those assets that provide the most benefit to the students. Custodians, instructional assistants, and school-based technology specialists provide that essential benefit to the schools. Do not reduce the positions and find the reductions needed in other areas. Thank you.
The next speaker is Precious Crabtree to be followed by Arthur Pervis and Alexa Krueger.
Good evening, Dr. Garza and school board members. My name is Precious Crabtree and I'm an elementary art resource teacher at Deer Park Elementary. I'm also an FEA board member. Here we are once again, another challenging budget cycle. Yet this year feels a little different. Maybe that's because we have a superintendent who has taken the time to reach out to the FCPs employees in the community to hear the voices of those who matter. Maybe it is because, for the first time in a very long time, we feel that we have understanding and support from our superintendent and school board members. This budget reflects that we matter as employees, and for that, I am grateful. Unfortunately, the budget cycle has just begun, and there is much work to do. The work is shared by all of us in this room and anyone who cares about our school system. As an employee and community member, I have been talking about the proposed budget with anyone who will listen. I plan to speak at the Board of Supervisors hearing as well in order to defend our schools' needs on behalf of our students. But we need school board members to stand and fight for this budget as well. We cannot afford for you to waver when you approach the Board of Supervisors or change the transfer amount during the presentation in April. Don't back down. We need the Board of Supervisors to stop giving lip service to their support for education and actually provide a transfer that meets this school system's needs. My two concerns with the current budget, raising class sizes and eliminating support staff. These cuts hurt our ability to meet the instructional needs of each of our students. You know the research, so I won't elaborate. Could we instead save money by cutting back on our obsession with testing? I mean, do we really need WEDA, eCarts, SOLs in every grade, VGLA, sixth grade music assessment, PE assessments, and my personal favorite, the art assessment? These are just a few of the many costly assessments that we give in FCPs. We would do better to invest that money into staffing support that helps teachers keep all students engaged in the learning process. Could we save money by simply allowing teachers to do their jobs? We are drowning in unnecessary paperwork and expectations from wave after wave of new standards and initiatives that have been added to our workload in recent years. Please put a freeze on any new initiatives for the coming year and evaluate the necessity of current programs and projects. Let's try to simplify curricular goals and let our teachers create and develop lessons in ways that they know reach every student. Trust your professionals and let us do what we love to do. Recently, I read a gut-wrenching commentary from a former teacher in Frederick, Maryland, who captured the challenges so many of us are experiencing. I've copied it for you and hope you will consider the true cost of our obsession with standards. I'd like to end with her final thoughts. It's just a sentence or two. "It is time that we fall on our sword. In our rabid pursuit of data and blame, we have sacrificed wisdom and abandoned its fruits. We cannot broaden our students' horizons by placing them and their teachers into narrow boxes unless we then plan to bury them." Thank you.
The next speaker is Arthur Pervis to be followed by Alexa Krueger and Lisa Ross. Mr. Pervis? Mr. Purvis?
Good evening, Board members. I apologize, but my remarks tonight are not to you, they are to the people in this audience.
Could you identify yourself?
Alexa Crizell.
I’m looking for Arthur Purvis before Mr. Purvis.
Dr. Garza, members of the Board, good evening. My name is Arthur Purvis, I’m president of the Fairfax County Taxpayers Alliance. The school system has been less than candid with the community about the budget. The superintendent’s budget message states, quote, “The primary cost contributors in the budget are an increase of students, a continued shift of special education towards greater levels of service, and a greater percentage of students eligible for free and reduced-price lunches,” end of quote. According to the proposed budget summary, however, spending increases before offsets total 156 million. Of that, only 17% is for increased enrollment, special education, and low-income students. 77% of the increase is for compensation. This is not new. Over the last 14 years, school spending increases before offsets totaled 1.6 billion. Of that, only 23% was for program and enrollment growth. Once again, 77% was for compensation. So compensation and not enrollment is the primary cost contributor in the school budget. The cost to the taxpayers is enormous. Since 2,000 real estate taxes for the typical homeowner have increased from $2,400 to $5,100, 114% increase. Inflation was 47%. Compensation is generous. A recent FCPS email to the Taxpayers Alliance states, quote, “Salary increases for FCPS employees average 4.6% annually since FY2000,” end of quote. Pensions allow retirement after 30 years at 75% of salary. Medical insurance plans have zero deductible and network with maximum out-of-pocket costs as low as $500, and neighboring school systems probably do the same. This is more than is needed to retain teachers, given that the system has about 30,000 applicants for 1,000 job openings and few teachers leave for higher salaries. What return do the taxpayers get for their investment? The average FCPSSAT score is at the 69th percentile. According to the 2013 ACT test results, only 54% of the 4,000 FCPS seniors tested were prepared for college, and only 18% of African-American students tested were prepared for college. And students who do go to college are not home-free. Half of college graduates are working in jobs that do not require a degree. Taxpayers are paying high taxes for low achievement. Last year’s pay increase should be rescinded, there should be an indefinite salary freeze, health insurance should have high deductibles and co-pays, as has happened in the private sector. The retirement age for pensions should be increased from 55 to 70. Schools in the system should be made charter schools. Faculty and staff in each school should be allowed to make their own curriculum decisions, compete with each other for students, and be emancipated from the district administrators. Trust your professionals. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alexa Crizell to be followed by Lisa Ross and Phyllis Payne.
Good evening, Dr. Garza and Board members. As I said when I approached the podium, my remarks here tonight are not so much for the Board but for you in the audience. I’m a parent of yet a student to enter FCPS. My son will start kindergarten this September. I have the option, and I’m fortunate enough, to decide where to send my son. So I’ve spent the last three years attending School Board meetings, volunteering for Board committees, and evaluating Fairfax County Public Schools. And what I see in this audience I’ve seen for the last three years: the parents of sleep talking about early start times, the coalition of the silence talking about minority issues. For three years, it’s remained unchanged. It’s 2014, and we are talking about such mundane issues rather than talking about giving our children the portrait of a 21st-century education they deserve. Now, I know that this has not fallen on deaf ears of the School Board, but rather, our Board of Supervisors. They must come to realize that education is a key component to the quality of life in Fairfax County. But if you go to a Board of Supervisors meeting, you see very few of us in attendance. So I challenge everyone tonight in this audience: we come here to the School Board meetings in great numbers, and they listen, but we are nowhere to be seen at the Board of Supervisors meeting where we are needed. So I ask for each of you who is here tonight, take the time for the gracious meeting that they’ve provided at hours that parents can attend, the one meeting at 6:00 PM, to go out in numbers and show our support, because we cannot afford this year to let it go by and watch and say, “Oh darn, we didn’t get the increase.” We cannot allow that to happen. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lisa Ross to be followed by Phyllis Payne and Jenny Strimer.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Ross, and I’m here to speak on behalf of the more than 20,000 Fairfax County students that suffer from ADD or ADHD. I want to point out how changing high school start times can save significant money for the county while providing these students with a more appropriate education. Last year, the Center for Disease Control found that 10% of high school girls and nearly 20% of high school boys have been diagnosed with ADD or ADHD. This is a huge portion of our student population. Now, I happen to believe that every student in Fairfax County is negatively affected by the two early start times in our high schools. However, our ADHD students are hit even harder by these two early start times. Brain studies of ADHD children reveal delayed brain maturation in regions involved in thinking, paying attention, and planning. Basically, these students struggle more than their peers with basic functions that are critical to learning. Adding insult to injury, they are further disadvantaged in Fairfax County with its school district-imposed sleep deprivation in high school. Studies show that not getting enough sleep increases the severity of ADHD symptoms. In fact, even a nightly sleep loss of an hour per night for these students has been proven to significantly decrease academic performance, sustained attention, working memory, and perseverance. In addition, inadequate sleep has been shown to actually cause ADD or ADHD symptoms in non-ADHD children. Thus, our two early start times are likely driving some students into special education services that otherwise should not need them. Why does Fairfax County engage in a practice that worsens the disability suffered by ADHD students and that causes ADHD symptoms in their non-disabled peers? It’s like putting earmuffs over the hearing aids of deaf students. I cannot say exactly how much money could be saved due to the increased need or the decreased need for special services for sleep-deprived ADHD students. However, the Brookings Institute found that there’s a correlation between start times of 7:00 AM and reductions in academic performance of disadvantaged students. The negative impact was equal to replacing an average teacher with a highly ineffective teacher. In essence, the district-imposed sleep deprivation undermines the best efforts of teachers as well as the students. I believe that we are experiencing a similar impact on ADHD students. By moving our high school start times later, we could see improvements in performance for both disadvantaged and ADHD students and a decreased need for special services for perhaps hundreds or thousands of students. And that should generate significant cost savings in the Fairfax County school budget. Please make this switch to later high school start times this fall and stop making school even harder for ADHD students. Thank you.
The next speaker is Phyllis Payne to be followed by Jenny Strimer and Kim Harris.
Good evening, I’m Phyllis Payne, and I’m here to represent sleep. Sleep has more than 10,000 members and is growing every week. Fairfax children and families need this change. The Virginia chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics is in favor of later morning start times for all high school students in Virginia. Many other organizations, which are listed on the board, also stand in support of the positive impact that later morning school schedules have for adolescents. We care about children in Fairfax, and we want school schedules that allow students to reach their full potential. I want to take a moment to thank Dr. Garza for her listening tours, and also to thank Jeff Plattenberg and Dr. Garza for working to establish a collaborative approach to resolving problems. Sleep advocates, we’re also very pleased to hear that many of you share our desire to make this change as soon as possible. We even heard from a student who hoped that you were going to make this change this year like tomorrow. In some respects, this is the longest-running community engagement project that FCPS has ever had. Now, it is time to act. Setting a school schedule to foster sufficient sleep is cost-effective. Economists from the Brookings Institute report $9 or more of benefit for every dollar spent. There are increased lifetime earnings for students with later middle and high school start times. The benefits are even larger among disadvantaged students, so making this change can help Fairfax close our achievement gap. It is time to act. Unfortunately, this budget already includes cuts for services and staff members needed by sleep-deprived students. So we’d better make sure we have more well-rested students to compensate. With later start times, there will be less demand for summer school, because students will pass the class the first time they take it. Students will have stronger immune systems to help cope with the loss of custodians. There are other places where well-rested students could decrease the workload: less need for SOL remediation, because students are alert to understand the information the first time, so teachers and students will be able to soar ahead. Well-rested students are less likely to experience depression or school anxiety, and this helps our overworked school psychologists and social workers and decreases the need for homebound instructions and special services. There will be fewer absences and tardies due to illnesses, exhaustion, and car crashes, decreasing the workload for the attendance office and for truancy officers. Transportation makes changes every year and continues to become more efficient. We ask that this year, you earmark any transportation savings, any efficiencies that are found, and dedicate them to implement high school start times, later high school start times in as many high schools as possible in September 2014. Put this in your budget now to make it clear that this effort is moving forward. It doesn’t add a dime to your budget request, but it brings us one step closer to making sure that it won’t be every kid, every day, who is being forced out of bed by a two-early alarm clock, well, three alarm clocks, a mother, a father, a dog, and sometimes a cold glass of water in the face. Now it’s time to act, it’s time to fix this. With regard to change, Nelson Mandela once said, “It always seems impossible until it is done.” Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Jenny Strimer to be followed by Kim Harris and Vivian Eng-Bendyworld.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Moon, and Board members, and Dr. Garza, for the chance to speak. My name is Jenny Strimer with the group Class Size Counts. Classes with 29 to 35-plus kids are now commonplace in some FCPS schools without a solution that parents can see and trust. Over 1,200 people and counting have now joined our petition for a fix. Oversized classes occur because class size increases are used to balance the budget, which we are about to do again, but this time, we may have a solution. We’ve learned the solution will not be those hard caps we petitioned for, that a trigger system would be wiser. We understand that such a system would guarantee a remedy from a menu of options whenever a class reaches a certain size or trigger. We can’t wait to see it. We support a trigger system if every remedy is high-quality, the process is transparent, loopholes are not allowed, and everything is well-monitored. A trigger system with these features is wise for two reasons related to our budget. The first, you have the tough job of prioritizing needs and wants. Reasonable class size, and we’re not asking for tiny, is one of the basics. It qualifies as a need. Without it, children are short-changed. Children need space for their desks and some individual attention. They need a learning environment without lots of disruption and stress. Our talented teachers must reach and challenge every child at every achievement level without overcrowding and administrative overload standing in their way. Secondly, a trigger system is cost-effective, because it’s flexible. It’s not just handing out teachers at a high cost. Some remedies could actually cost very little, and others might cost more but still less than a whole new teacher. Some ideas we’ve heard and discussed are: no more principals trading in classroom teachers, focusing relief on core academics, regrouping, using non-classroom teachers, school-based or not, adding an aide if the room is big enough, considering homeroom restructure for upper elementary, or even combination classes. Having remedies in our toolbox that work while costing less is wise. I’m a parent, and I’m a taxpayer, so I’m totally on board with that. And of course, if those remedies are unsuitable or unworkable, which they may often be, a new teacher should be added as part of this trigger system. An adequate number of this budget’s 230 staffing reserve positions should be available to deal with oversized classes. Improved projections for staff allocations will help, too, so there’s less scrambling for relief come fall. So let’s do this trigger system, and let’s make it high-quality and transparent. With limited funds, this solution makes sense. Thanks to all who signed the petition, and let’s keep the signatures coming. Thanks to you, our leaders, for hearing our voices and for recognizing that class sizes ballooning well into the 30s year after year are not okay. And thank you, Dr. Garza, for stating that we can and should do better. Thanks.
The next speaker is Kim Harris to be followed by Vivian Eng-Bendyworld.
Hello, my name is Lauren Barton. I’m actually taking Kim Harris’s spot, it didn’t make it in time for the update to your papers. I want to speak on behalf of Class Size Counts, a group of parents and teachers numbering 1,200-plus from 25 different Fairfax County schools. We are watching the discussion on class size closely. We support your efforts in creating a class-size regulation that employs automatic triggers to relieve extremely large class sizes. A regulation, like Jenny mentioned, is transparent, has no loopholes, and is fair to all schools. As you heard earlier from my daughter, the triggers would definitely have helped in her last few years of elementary school. She did have 38 kids. Our principal was unable to get a teacher from the teacher reserve that year. We realize this regulation is not a topic within the current budget debate, however, we want to state our support for your listening to the community of parents and teachers who know firsthand the negative effects of large class sizes on our children. We speak for those children who are being short-changed in receiving baseline educational services. We will advocate, we will advocate strongly for an increase in the Board of Supervisors' transfer of funds so that further, more painful cuts will not have to be made. On another topic, I would also like to express my support for the implementation of later school start times for middle and high school. I know that you’re already aware of the sleep group of parent advocates, along with the Smart School Start Team and Children’s National Medical Center, who have demonstrated with research, careful research, that it can be done with little impact to the cost structure, that traffic patterns will adjust for Langley, and, most importantly, it should be done for the well-being of our children. As a parent of three children in the Fairfax County Public School System, two of whom will be in the middle and high school here in Fairfax County next year, this will make a huge difference in their quality of life and performance as students. And to echo one of the other women’s points, I have another daughter who has ADHD, and my husband and I are seriously considering other options, because the early start times are not going to work for her. It’s just too difficult. They really do need extra rest. But thank you. We appreciate your support in this initiative, and we hope it comes to Langley soon. Thank you.
The next speaker is speaker number 19, Vivian Eng-Bendyworld.
My name is Riley Bendewell, I’m taking the place of her.
Okay. I mean, you have your own spot as a number-one student, number-one speaker on the list. Do you still want to speak for your mother?
No, she doesn’t. Thank you. Hello, my name is Riley Bendewell. I’m a high school freshman in the Fairfax County Public School System. I’m concerned that there is a war of foot, not the kind that my father, an active-duty service member, or my mother, now a veteran in the Air Force, has physically dealt with, rather one that festers inside communities and weighs upon everyone within. I’m talking about difference, and opportunity, diversity, and the sense of belief that there is not enough of each for everyone to arrive at the understanding for all three to exist together. As stated by Thomas Jefferson, “To penetrate and dissipate these clouds of darkness, the general mind must be strengthened by education.” But what kind of education did he mean? But what kind of education did he mean? What kind of discussion should be had after everyone here had voiced their concerns tonight? What does this mean for the Fairfax County Public School System facing $140 million of debt in the coming year? What does this mean for students like me and not like me? First, I would like to say that I had no control over the color of my hair, the color of my eyes, or how much higher or lower my cheekbones are than my brothers and my neighbors. I do, however, have control over how much I read, whether or not I do or don't do my homework, and whether I am going to work really hard and try to handle having my first job while going to school at the same time. I know I won't handle all of these situations perfectly. I know that there are some things I won't attempt right now. I also know that my parents both came from low-income families, however, and didn't handle this perfectly when they were young either. They did, however, work really hard, and through sacrifice and community have been able to give both my brother and myself a chance in the FCPS school district. This is my point. Every student in Fairfax County, no matter what their facial features, height, family house, size, or academic advancements, may be and deserves the opportunity to learn and better themselves in the public schools of this county. This means that raising already large class sizes in the areas where families continue to work hard is just as wrong as doing this in another part of the county. It also does not mean that the students who are good at math and science, who always work and thrive at the most competitive science and technology high schools, that our school system should be concentrating efforts and funding to put our students where they won't thrive. I wouldn't have thrive at TJ, and that is why I'm not there. I'm at Langley. What it does mean is that we have responsibility to work hard, reach out to our teachers, give and get help from our neighbors, and be part of the county community that includes our greatest asset: people, students like me. There are diversity and future. That is America. Thank you.
Let me now call Mr. Ted Verkop, a largest group of members, who is also chairman of the Budget Committee, to read the names of the next set of speakers. Mr. Verkop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've actually reached the first intermission, so I'll just review a little bit of the ground rules while some more people are coming in. So if you have not already done so, be sure to provide your written comments to a staff member at the entrance of the auditorium, and please turn off and silence your cellphones for all of those of you who've come in since the meeting began. Also, remember that each speaker is allotted three minutes, and to be respectful of everyone, please stay within that time, and everyone's been terrific on this point so far. The deputy clerk will start the timer when you begin to speak, and you will be able to see the time remaining on the clock at the lectern, and the buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes. I think that's enough of the review of the ground rules. And at this point, the next three names I have are Todd Cranford, to be followed by Lolita Mancheno-Smoke, and Avis Catchings. Mr. Cranford.
Superintendent Garza, school board members and staff, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening, and thank you for all you do for the children of Fairfax County Public Schools. My name is Todd Cranford, and I'm the parent of two children in the Fairfax County School System and a member of the Coalition of the Silence. Dr. Garza, I appreciate your willingness to get out and hear from the many stakeholders in this educational endeavor that we call the Fairfax County Public School System. We are justifiably proud of the Fairfax County Public School System, and I pray that the level of excellence that we now have not only remains, but is improved upon. To do this, it takes many things, including vision, dedicated, hard-working teachers, and of course, money. Your request at $5.7 million increases, of course, appreciated, and then going in the right direction, and I imagine supported by most of the people in this room. That is why I'm concerned that you were not bold enough in your initial request. I am concerned that, and I join other parents, many of whom are COT supporters, in expressing my dismay and concern about the choices you have made in your budget response to having insufficient funding. A budget is far more than a fiscal roadmap detailing how much you can and spend and on what. In the case of the FCPS budget, it is a public pronouncement of our priorities regarding how best to educate our diverse student body. In an ideal world, we would not have to make difficult choices about which programs to fund. We'd be able to fund all of them. But we do not live in an ideal world, and choices therefore must be made, choices that have significant consequences. These consequences, both short-term and long-term, are what worry me about the choices proposed in the budget. While cuts appear to be across the board, the reality is that the proposed cuts disproportionately impact approximately 60,000 COT students. That amounts to almost one-third of the FCPS enrollment, a not-insignificant number. An issue that is particularly important to me is the achievement gap. During one of your stops on your listening tour last fall, I expressed my concerns about closing this gap, that has white and Asian children on one end of the spectrum and black and Latino children on the other. You told me then that you felt that FCPS had the intellectual capacity to address this issue, and I challenged you to find the moral courage to do so. Access to a world-class education and the ability to thrive for COTs kids, black, Latino, and poor, are jeopardized by the lack of funding for the programs that are intended to support their success. Therefore, Dr. Garza, be bold, be audacious, and be true to FCPS's high ideals. When it says that, and I quote, "We believe it is a legal, political, economic, and moral imperative to close the achievement gap," end quote, we should not, we cannot, do less. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cranford. Next will be Lolita Mancheno-Smoke, followed by Avis Catchings, and then Michael Raymond. Ms. Mancheno-Smoke.
Good evening, honorable school board members, Dr. Garza, and staff. Buenas noches. I am Dr. Lolita Mancheno-Smoke, co-founder and vice-chair of the Coalition of the Silence. First, I would like to respectfully recognize that your leadership has already been felt, Dr. Garza, by your exceptional commitment to transparency and genuine engagement with the community in this budget process. Not too long ago, COTs was pleading for just basic budget transparency. While we all understand we are living through tough economic times as a nation and as a county, we believe now is not the time to forego our long-term principles and vision as stated at the FCPS website. We believe it is a legal, political, economic, and moral imperative to close the achievement gap. The budget choices as currently presented are a direct contradiction to that stated legal, political, economic, and moral imperative, and specifically adversely impact Latino children and families the most. Hispanic student membership in FCPS has grown by 272% over the past 10 years and continues to grow at an annual rate of 4.8%. We all accept the premise that education is the great equalizer. However, over the years, we keep seeing budget cuts that weaken the progress towards leveling the playing field for all children. Touted as one of the nation's top public school systems, there shouldn't be an achievement gap, yet nothing has changed. The majority of FCPS dropouts are Hispanic. Hispanic students constitute 23.6% of the total student population, yet make up 40% of dropouts. As our student enrollment increases, these numbers will continue to increase unless we get serious about attacking the root cause. Failure rates for Hispanic children are unacceptably high for grade-level reading proficiency end of the third grade. Reading at grade level has a direct correlation to being on track for high school graduation. Hispanic children are 20 percentage points below average on English Language Arts, Math, and Science on SOL pass proficient rates. The College Board Progress Report on Latino students emphasized how much of a game-changer the opportunity for extended instructional time is for closing the achievement gap in the early years. Yet here we are proposing to further cut summer school funding when we already have empirical data showing that schools that lost Monday or modified calendar now have lower disaggregated achievement rates. We ask you all to please reassess and consider that the future of all our children dictates the future vitality and prosperity of our county and overall competitiveness of our labor force. Understand, students grow up to be unemployable adults, and ultimately, an unintended consequence of our failure to see the long-term impact of budget decisions is what we're going to see in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mancheno-Smoke. I'm out of practice. Next is Avis Catchings, to be followed by Michael Raymond, and then Elizabeth Enda.
Dr. Garza, school board members and staff, I'm Avis Catchings, co-founder of the Coalition of the Silence. The Coalition of the Silence's mission is to close the academic achievement and discipline gaps that disproportionately harm African-American, Latino, and socially-economically disadvantaged kids. These children make up one-third of the student body. Tonight, we are here for them. Your FCPS website even says, "We believe it is a legal, political, economic, and moral imperative to close the achievement gap." Your proposed budget should reflect this imperative. Otherwise, that statement is just lip service, and we've heard enough lip service. Budgets are choices. How much money you ask for from the supervisors, Board of Supervisors, is a choice. While we support the choices you made to pay staff fairly and to preserve many important programs that benefit all kids, including COTs kids, we are deeply disappointed by other choices in your budget. COTs wants to be a supportive partner, but we cannot ignore the needs of our kids, and we cannot ignore the choices you have made in this budget that do impact them. You see, we are not fighting for programs here. We are fighting for children's lives. That is why we are so relentless. This is about life choices for COTs kids. When COTs kids fail in school, too often, they also fail in life. Proposing any cuts to needs-based staffing, when the FCPS student population has increased by thousands, and when most of this growth is in our neediest communities, is just not a good choice. It means larger class sizes and the needier schools, and fewer teachers to give these children the extra help they need to transition successfully in school. Cutting summer school funding by half is a bad choice. It ignores the importance of preventing loss of learning over the summer break and lagtime learning the following year that impacts not just COTs kids, but teachers and other students in the classroom. Not expanding or restoring funding to other important programs that close the discipline and achievement gaps are also poor choices. We need to expand pre-K, restore full-day Monday, and modify calendar for needy kids. We need assurance through this budget that you will close the digital divide that hurt COTs kids. We need funds to continue to combat disproportionality in school discipline, including funding attendance clerk positions that reduce absenteeism, often the first indicator of discipline issues. You have time between now and your formal budget request to the Board of Supervisors to make some different choices, and we urge you to please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Catchings. Next is Michael Raymond, to be followed by Elizabeth Enda and Ramona Morrow. Is Michael Raymond here? All right, we will move on. Elizabeth Enda. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Endy.
Endy.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Endy, mother of a college senior and a seventh grader at Longfellow Middle School. I've been an advocate for later high school start times for the last nine years. In this time of budget crisis, it is essential the school board focus directly on expenditures that will maximize the efficacy of our schools and performance of our students. When you evaluate the arguments from various stakeholders on budget concerns, keep in mind that school start time is one of the few issues that affects every high school student every day, and in a manner that is at the heart of the educational experience. Indeed, the Brookings Institute-Hamilton Project authors found that later start times would increase student achievement with the impact equivalent to an additional two months of schooling. It's extremely unlikely that the school board could identify any other circumstance where a modest additional investment, if any, creates such a meaningful benefit to the student population. Harvard Medical School's Division of Sleep Medicine reports that going without adequate sleep carries with it both short- and long-term consequences. In the short term, a lack of adequate sleep can affect judgment, mood, ability to learn and retain information, and may increase the risk of serious accidents and injury. Researchers from the University of Minnesota explain why teens can't just fix the problem by going to sleep earlier. From the onset of puberty until late teen years, the brain chemical melatonin, which is responsible for sleepiness, is secreted from approximately 11:00 p.m. until approximately 8:00 a.m. This secretion is based on human circadian rhythms and is rather fixed. In other words, typical youth are not able to fall asleep much before 11:00 p.m., and their brains will remain in sleep mode until about 8:00 a.m., regardless of what time they go to bed. Given the wealth of evidence of the behavioral and health benefits that result from later high school start times, it is not an intellectually sound argument to simply reject implementing later start times because it may cost more money. If that were the case, there are a myriad of other programs that cost far more and return far less in proven benefits that should be cut first. The school board must consider savings from the reduced need for behavioral support services even as it looks at potential costs. Every day that you delay in implementing later high school start times irreparably harms our children and their academic performance. It's time to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Endy. Next is Ramona Morrow, to be followed by Beth Steele, and then Janet Laubgroß. Ah, we have a substitute. Please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Pam Conde, the vice president of advocacy for the Fairfax County Council of PTAs. I'm stepping in for Ramona Morrow, our president, who had to attend to her ailing mom. FCCPTA supports the FY15 budget requests. The thousands of parents, teachers, and students of FCCPTA stand behind our Fairfax schools, and we support Dr. Garza's request for a 5.7% increase transfer from the Board of Supervisors. Based on policy resolutions approved by our membership, FCCPTA has consistently supported sufficient funding for FCPS, and its efforts to, one of our quotes that we just pull out every year as update is needed, maintain our academic standards, recruit and maintain the most experienced and knowledgeable teachers, have the most effective class size, and continue to advance music and arts, foreign language, technology, critical thinking, those 21st-century skills, and the ability to teach to each individual child, and to ensure that Fairfax students can be the entrepreneurs and civic leaders of tomorrow. Everyone in this room knows that to maintain our quality school system, to provide our graduates with what they need, requires that funding. And that means that as we've had 15,000 more kids, higher VRS requirements, higher healthcare costs, the end-of-stimulus funding, and other uncontrollable costs, it means we need more from the county and from the state. So to that ends, to make sure that county residents and leaders outside of this room are really knowledgeable folks, FCCPTA is conducting a grassroots advocacy campaign so that folks that have kids in the schools, that don't have kids in the schools, that depend on the schools through their corporations and such, all understand how important it is to fully fund the schools, and most importantly, that we all need to stand up and voice our opinions accordingly. We especially support the superintendent's efforts to focus limited funds into the classrooms and to ensure that we maintain our high-quality teachers by paying them appropriately. So you have my two pages, but basically, there are three important things we wanted to make sure were heard. We support the step increase. You all know the numbers. We start out okay, and then we're at the bottom of the pack. So we support a step increase as the first step to making sure Fairfax teachers and the rest of the staff get paid well. We also really appreciate that you went out to so many of the districts and met to so many of the meetings and really listened for hours upon hours. And these are challenging budget times, and you really have stepped up to the Herculean task, so we appreciate that, Dr. Garza. We appreciate that proposing cuts is always difficult, and that is necessary, but that focusing resources in the classroom is important. And lastly, we stand with the folks that talk about class size, and we do have to take issue with one part of the budget. No increases of .5 for elementary or middle or one class, because... increases of .5 for elementary or middle or one class, because in my elementary school in Westbrier, where my daughter goes when we're on PTA president, we've got kids of over 30 and have since before we had this budget crisis for the last five to 10 years. We have a 1998 resolution from FCCPTA that this has been ongoing. So, we appreciate the triggers. We're looking forward to working with you, but we can't support any increase in class size. So, thank you very much. Oh, and we absolutely support sleep.
Thank you, Ms. Conde.
And have resolutions to back that up.
Next is Beth Steele, to be followed by Janet Laubgroos and Michael Everett. Beth Steele.
My name is Beth Gamba Steele. I signed up to speak tonight in order to ask that the FCPS budget does not compromise your ability to prioritize later high school start times in Fairfax County public schools. Please plan for the transportation efficiencies that would allow as many high schools to start after 8:00 a.m. as possible in September 2014, with a complete execution in September 2015. As you know, there's concrete evidence proving that teens with adequate sleep have improved learning, better memory, and a brighter outlook. Well-rested teens have greater performance in schools, sports, and extracurricular activities. They make better decisions, and they're safer drivers. They are sick less often, and they're in school more. Our school district and our high school students will all benefit from a later start time. Because of teen biology, it's not possible for high school students to get to sleep before about 11:00 p.m. It's in the morning, then, that we should give teens the time they physically need to be fully awake and ready to learn. We publicly pride ourselves for our Fairfax County Public Schools high schools' test scores and their graduation rate. I ask myself how we could throw teens into the least ideal schedule and yet expect successful outcomes from them year after year after year. It's not the time to tolerate blaming electronics or permissive parents for the great sleep deficit reflected in our Fairfax County youth survey. Our teens would need to be asleep, not go to bed, but already be completely asleep by about 9:00 in order to get the sleep they need and still make it to school on time. This simply does not seem fair or reasonable for teenagers. It's not the time to use finances as an excuse or transportation as the scapegoat. With the many studies done to date, and the late start time that occurs in countless school districts just like ours across the country, we know this can be done. We know it's a medical fact with great support from the youth-oriented professional community that elementary school students can get to sleep early, they can wake up early, and they will get the proven rest they need with an earlier start time. And we know all students in the system will eventually become high school beneficiaries of later start time. I ask myself if we give in to each opposing view, keep the status quo, and disregard all the evidence in favor of a later high school start time, is this really the environment or the message we want for Fairfax County public schools or for our students? I appreciate your ability to prioritize this issue. I applaud your willingness to consider the mechanics of changing the schedule after several failed attempts to change it previously. I know your burden is heavy with many competing interests on your plate. Your time encouraged to put a stake in the ground for our students to be healthier and stronger is a great testament to your high standards for Fairfax County students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. Next is Janet Laubgroos, to be followed by Michael Everett and Cherie Brown Kaplan.
Good evening, Superintendent Garza and school board members. You are all well aware of the benefits of increased sleep on the help of our adolescents. After all, you passed a resolution with a goal of achieving later high school start times. I am here not only supporting that goal, but also encouraging you to act on it as soon as possible. As a clinical psychologist in Fairfax County for over 25 years, and a parent of two very different sons, one still in high school and one in college, I am well aware of the diverse needs in our school system for the use of money. However, I feel that the goal of later high school start times needs to be top priority due to the number of people this change will impact positively. Later high school start times will improve the health of every adolescent and some parents in our school system. What could be of greater value? Please find a way to implement this change in the fall of 2014 and make room in the budget for whatever costs might be incurred. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, I understand there's been a change in the order, so switching with Michael Everett is Cherie Glassman, to be followed by Cherie Brown Kaplan and Stephen Greenberg.
To Dr. Garza and the distinguished school board members here today, my name is Cherie Glassman. I'm a member of COT's. I'm the former education chair of the NAACP and a member of sleep. We've heard today that the budget is a moral document, and I do believe that. Except Superintendent Garza, our budget today does not suggest that it is a moral document. In fact, it suggests otherwise. This budget robs from the poor. We just celebrated Dr. King's holiday, and Dr. King asked us to be a drum major for justice. He not only asked us to be a drum major for justice, but he said be a drum major for peace, be a drum major for equality, be a drum major for diversity. And I think we're failing our students in a couple of ways. One, we do not have in this budget about expanding pre-K to give needy kids a head start in school. Because of the enormous socioeconomic diversity in Fairfax County, the achievement gap begins in kindergarten at the classroom door. We can't help ameliorate that gap by intervening earlier. I also would like to talk about something that's also not in the budget is diversity training. We reduce the issues of bullying if we just invested into diversity training and helping everyone to understand that we're all different, and that's not a bad thing. And lastly, I want to talk about something that's extremely important, and that's sleep. That's the later start times for our middle school and our high school students. The New England Journal of Medicine says 25 minutes delay in school times helps teens. Later start times also helps to close the achievement gap. We've seen that. And we've also seen how not closing, how not implementing later start times opens and widens the gap so much I can't, I have personal experience to tell you that it has done that. We say we are Fairfax. We will cease being Fairfax if we do not drastically change start times. This is a health issue. No child can learn by catching the bus in the dark. When kids come home, they go immediately to their desk and they study. They have no time to have downtime. They have no time to catch a break. They study in between eating, and they study in between going to the bathroom. This has not only impacted the students, but it's impacted parents. Many parents that I've talked to have to have three jobs. The one that they go to in the morning, the one that they come home to, and then sleep. That's when they lose the amount of time that they can't even do when they get home by not being able to help their children. So, I say in conclusion, if we want to remain Fairfax, let's please keep some of these priorities in the budget that I've named. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glassman. Next is Cherie Brown Kaplan, to be followed by Stephen Greenberg and Jennifer Casata. Ms. Brown Kaplan. All right, we will move on to Mr. Greenberg.
Dr. Garza, Chairman Moon, esteemed school board members, the invisible Mr. Ash, my name is Steve Greenberg. I come for you this evening representing some of the best educators in this country, not the other 29,000 that didn't make it. The members of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers in regards to the fiscal year 2015 advertised budget. FCFT stands with our incredibly competent superintendent. We support the advertised budget, not ifs, ands, buts, the whole thing. Is the budget perfect? Of course not. It can't be, because we've been underfunded by our county supervisors for four years. This means we have to make decisions and cuts we don't want, but there's no choice. This is a shame for our students and for this community. Dr. Garza has listened to the thousands she's met with over the past five months. Their collective lobby is this budget, with special attention given by Dr. Garza to make sure our students are adversely impacted as little as possible. I know that my suggestion to raise class size was honored, and that the other suggestions made by our teacher organizations were heard. We, yes, your teachers, were the ones that proposed raising class size, so we can afford to keep our great educators here. 27 or 28 in a class means zero if our nationally renowned teachers are gone. Dr. Garza's budget is the best lemonade anyone could possibly make, considering the rotten lemons we've been given. When life gives you lemons, you, well, you get rid of them, don't you? I mean, if a lemon isn't what you really wanted, of course, right? We should never settle when it comes to our kids or our future, never. We should never take advice from people who don't work in our schools nor have any formal background in education. Our children deserve better leadership than that. The real shame is that we are as close to revitalizing this school system as we are to destroying it. Dr. Garza knows the path to success. We need to give her a chance to save us, as she has done for others. She's proven. That's why we searched so hard for, so we could all have a happy ending for our students and community. It kind of reminds me of Cinderella. You know, if the hard-working and virtuous Cinderella could just get to the ball, then happily ever after could arrive. Remember the ugly stepsisters in that tale? It was only a matter of time before everyone realized that they were oppressing Cinderella. Their spitefulness came back to haunt them. Cinderella is going to the ball. Hopefully, she will get there sooner than December of 2015. I'm going to help her, as I am her fairy godmother. Please giggle as I wave my magic wand around the kingdom, telling all of Cinderella's plight and how the ugly stepsisters really didn't care. I may even turn a pumpkin or two into a carriage and run over as many as 10 pumpkins with it as we move towards the ball, towards the happy ending. To be sure we all control the ending of this tale, please know my carriage is always open, better in it than on the outside. That is our leader. That is our expert. I am proud of her work. That superintendent said 5.7 gets us to the ball. Let's all get busy to make it happy. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. Next is Jennifer Casata, to be followed by Ed Saperstein and Mark Veymeyer. Ms. Casata.
Chairman Moon, school board members, Dr. Garza, good evening. My name is Jennifer Casata. I'm a parent of two students at Wakefield Forest Elementary School, so I was a former employee of FCPS and a current employee of a neighboring school division. Let me begin by expressing how impressed I am with the efforts of the superintendent and staff to develop this proposed budget, given all of the current economic challenges. I realize there is no way for a budget to be developed that addresses all of the school division's needs, and this one represents a strong starting point. I want to speak about smaller elementary schools and the impact of some of the proposed budget adjustments on those schools. Small schools have enormous benefits. With smaller numbers of students, families, and staff can truly get to know one another. However, minor fluctuations in enrollment or minor changes to staffing formulas tend to have more drastic effects on smaller schools than larger ones. News Wakefield Forest is my example. According to Fall 2013 Membership Data from VideoWe, FCPS has 16 elementary schools under 500 with another five between 500 and 520. Wakefield Forest, with a membership of 515, falls in that second group. The proposed budget, however, Wakefield Forest has a projected enrollment for 2015 of 473. This year's projection was more than 30 students below where it currently stands. Normally, that difference would not have that major of an impact. However, with this proposed budget, there could be some substantial ones. Proposed budget includes a reduction of assistant principal allocations at elementary schools under 500 students from full-time to half-time. According to the projections, this means Wakefield Forest would lose half the time of our assistant principal. While I understand the desire to be efficient, I want to highlight the importance of the assistant principal. The role of the AP has evolved over time into one of a true instructional leader. With the advent of standards-based grading and standards-based evaluation systems for teachers, assistant principals spend a great deal of time in classrooms, working with teachers, observing teachers. They often serve as school test coordinators, as well as representatives for IEP meetings. They partner with principals in developing and maintaining the culture of an individual school. Reducing the position to half-time would make that difficult, especially for someone who would be half-time at two different schools. I would like to advocate for maintaining full-time assistant principals, if at all possible. For a school in a situation like Wakefield Forest, currently above 500 students, I would recommend that they at least be held harmless until official enrollment is determined in September, so they don't lose a valuable assistant principal only to find out after September 30th that they could have the full-time position after all. The proposed budget also reduces the number of school-based technology specialists for smaller schools, which will pose challenges as schools are in the middle of expanding the use of technology down to almost one-to-one levels and integrating technology into instruction. Finally, the proposed increase in class sizes, which impacts the number of teaching positions allocated to schools, impacts smaller schools more quickly by leading to the need for combination classes, since it's harder to absorb the loss of even one teacher. Also, given that the number of resource teachers is dependent on the number of classroom teachers, any decrease in staffing has a ripple effect. I know that increasing class sizes is one of very few ways to generate significant savings. However, I'd like to advocate for the use of any additional state revenues that could possibly come in to be first allocated to restoring class sizes. I wish you all of the best as you consider this proposed budget, as well as all the vitally important alternatives and options people are discussing tonight. Thank you for your time and service. I feel so incredibly fortunate to have my children attend Fairfax County public schools in general and Wakefield Forest in specific. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casata. You may have set the world record for words per minute there. Next is Ed Saperstein, to be followed by Mark Veymeyer and Stuart Gibson. Looks like we have a substitute.
I am not Ed Saperstein, but I am speaking on his behalf. Tim Thompson is also here. He's the co-chair of our committee. I'm a member of the Education Committee of the Fairfax County Federation of Citizens Association, so I'm speaking on our committee's behalf. In formulating FCPS's budget...
Ms. Trainer, would you go ahead and introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry. I'm Nancy Trainer. Hello. In formulating FCPS's budget, we'll focus on three priorities. One, salaries. Two, state efficiency review recommendations from the Gibson Report. And three, class size. As to salaries, as you know, teachers have only received one step increase over the last five fiscal years, that being in fiscal year 2012. Thus, for fiscal year 2015, to the extent feasible, we support a step increase. Additionally, we suggest that in order to save funds while still helping those most in need of the extra salary, you consider granting a smaller salary increase for higher earners, say those earning over $100,000. We also highly recommend that an ad hoc compensation committee be formed by the school board and Board of Supervisors. This committee would compare and evaluate the salaries, including fringe benefits, of FCPS employees in various positions, excluding teachers, with county employees having comparable positions. The goal would be to determine appropriate salary levels for comparable non-teacher positions. With regard to our second priority, the state efficiency review, we agree that FCPS should implement the report's recommended cost savings, including eliminating some assistant principals, elementary school clerical staff, and custodians. We realize that this will be difficult for the employees impacted, and that some added administrative costs may be incurred in order to achieve these multi-year cost reductions. Finally, we recognize the obvious pressure on class size, which is our third priority. We recommend trying the following experiment in some high schools, which may require a waiver or discussion with state authorities. The experiment is to ask some high school principals to choose one or two courses to have much larger class sizes than normal, and use the related cost savings to have reduced class sizes in some other courses. These larger classes could be, for example, in rooms with portable dividers or an auditorium. If feasible, perhaps once a week or so, these larger classes could be broken down into smaller groups. Teachers teaching the larger classes could get a bonus or reduced number of teaching periods, but this should be done in a way to lower the overall cost of teaching that course while still allowing the teachers to teach their required number of students each week. This could operate in a manner similar to the larger Survey 101 courses in colleges, in which professors lecture a few times a week, supplemented by a smaller discussion class. We've made this discussion, this suggestion in the past, but resubmit it to you today and hope you'll receive it in the spirit of creative problem solving with regard to class size. To the extent that the budget can possibly permit it, we would also like to state our preference for having no increases in elementary school class size. Thank you for your patience in these public sessions and for your collective service to our community.
Thank you, Ms. Trainer. Before we go on, I'm going to circle back and ask if Michael Raymond has arrived. Okay, and Cherie Brown Kaplan. Ms. Brown Kaplan.
I apologize. There's an accident right now getting off of 495. Good evening, Dr. Garza, Mr. Chairman, and school board members. My name is Cherie Brown Kaplan. I am the founder and chair of the Fairfax Alliance for Appropriate Public Education, FAPE. I'm addressing the Gibson Report's recommendation to accelerate implementation of standardized response to intervention, RTI. RTI was required of school divisions by the amendments to IDA Congress passed in 2004. As the Gibson Report noted, nine years after its introduction, in FCPS, RTI as a standardized approach has been implemented in only 57 schools, less than 30% of the school divisions' schools. Yet, expanding standardized RTI is a necessary step that is vital to student learning. Yet, expanding standardized RTI is a necessary step that is vital to student learning and the success of FCPS. According to the Gibson Report, some schools in FCPS have implemented RTI concepts on their own through PLCs or other initiatives, but no peer-reviewed research exists to demonstrate the effectiveness of such homegrown approaches. Unfortunately, Gibson notes, quote, "The lack of a single, consistent RTI approach may be contributing to an emerging issue of over-representation of economically disadvantaged and minority students in special education within FCPS." Investing in the proven standardized-tiered approach of RTI, as recommended by the Gibson Report, achieves three critical objectives for FCPS. First, RTI puts a priority on closing the achievement gap and provides critical support for the development and learning of children who are economically disadvantaged, speak English as a second language, have a suspected disability, or at risk of developing disabilities, for example, reading. Without the investment of RTI, these at-risk children may enter a trajectory that can result in short and long-term school failure. Second, RTI provides FCPS with the means to address the over identification of Hispanic students in special education. As the Gibson Report noted, in 2011, Hispanic students representing 27% of FCPS special education population, while only making up 21% of the entire student body. Third, RTI will save FCPS millions of dollars of special education expenditures. Research shows that the way-to-fail model is costly to schools. There is little chance that a third grader found eligible for services will ever exit special education. If standardized RTI effectively prevented the need for the special education identification of a single third grader, the savings to FCPS by the time the student graduated would amount to about $92,000 in today's budget. The reduction through RTI of just 1% of next year's projected number of special education students would result in savings greater than $23.6 million. These funds more than pay for the estimated $2.1 million over two years that Gibson calculated it would cost to fully implement standardized RTI. To conclude, standardized RTI is an effective, proven approach that will quickly pay for itself. FAP urges you to include this important Gibson recommendation in your final budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brown Kaplan. Next is Mark Vemeyer, to be followed by Stuart Gibson and Virginia Fitzshea. Mr. Vemeyer.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mark Vemeyer, and my daughter Claire is a third-grade student at Brenmore Park Elementary School. I am grateful that BMP, with its projected enrollment increases, has apparently been spared the worst of the proposed cuts. According to the proposed budget, the projections for BMP have placed us above the level where we risk having our assistant principal cut to half-time and barely above the level where we would face a cut to our school-based technology specialist. However, I come before you tonight to ask that you consider more than a school's enrollment numbers as you make your budgetary decisions. I recognize that there is an appeal to using simple formulas when allocating resources. On the surface, enrollment-based cuts seem fair, but I would remind you tonight, as Dr. Garza learned when she came to the Mason District on her listening tour, that enrollment numbers alone do not adequately describe the challenges of our schools. In the Mason District, needs-based staffing is our lifeblood, and we cannot afford to lose any of it. We know that enrollment numbers do not tell the story of many of the schools in Cluster Three. Indeed, programs like Title I specifically recognize that students who attend our schools need more assistance and funding, not less. The State School Efficiency Review recognizes this as well, recommending a pilot program and assessment of student performance and demographics before reducing assistant principals based on enrollment figures. Measuring the needs of students based solely on head count ignores other significant sources of challenges to student achievement. Small schools like BMP rely on their assistant principals to fill the many gaps that do not exist at other schools with different demographics. BMP needs every second it can get from our assistant principal, the incomparable Amanda Baxter, whose energy, presence, and sheer force of will motivates every BMP student to believe, achieve, and succeed. If a school like BMP had its ISPITS reduced, then our high farms, high ESOL population would still be expected to use online textbooks to compete as global citizens in the 21st century, would still be expected to learn the technological skills they need to bridge the digital divide, but they would have to do more of it on their own in circumstances where home access to computers and the internet cannot be taken for granted. These consequences would only be exacerbated if, instead of devoting all of their time and attention on a single low-population, high-needs school, assistant principals and ISPITS were required to split their time between two such schools. I do not mean to minimize the difficult task that is before you, and I recognize that cuts must be made. I simply ask that when the time comes for you to make your decisions, you pause and remember that fairness and equity cannot be measured by simple head counts, and that the budget act should not fall on those who needs are the greatest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vemeyer. Next to speak is our distinguished emeritus, Stuart Gibson of the Hunter Mill District. Mr. Gibson.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Gibson, and two years ago, I retired from there, and a year ago, I retired after a 36-year career with the federal government, and now I work for you. I work in schools every week as a substitute teacher. I know what it's like to have 30 children in a Spanish class. I know what it's like to have 60 kids in chorus. I know what happens when one or two students act out and disrupt learning for an entire classroom, and I know what happens when students are not actively engaged in learning. I also see firsthand the impact of budget cuts we've made that I voted for when I sat where you're sitting. We have large classes, unruly classrooms, stressed teachers, not enough administrators to deal with student behavior issues. More cuts, even those proposed by Dr. Garza, would make matters worse. Some have questioned whether we spend our budget wisely and effectively. To them, I respond, we have a number of objective measures by which to compare our spending and performance, including outside independent analyses, some of which have been referred to by Mr. Gibson, not related to me. We have apples-to-apples comparison with other school districts. We know Fairfax County spends less per pupil than most other area school district, and yet our students continue to achieve at high levels. We spend a significantly smaller percentage of our budget on central administration and overhead than every other school district in the area. Our teachers earn less than their peers in neighboring districts at the beginning, the middle, and the end of their careers, and at the end of a 30-year career, our teachers are paid $100,000 less than they would earn in Montgomery County or in some other counties. And over the past five years, enrollment has grown twice as fast as the school budget. That's wrong. So what's the problem? Why are members of this board saying we shouldn't ask for the amount of money that we need to run our schools? Apparently, some people think that either we have enough money or we have too much money. They're wrong. Ask people like me who work in schools, ask students, ask parents, they'll tell you, classes are too big, teachers are underpaid and overworked, we cannot continue to neglect our building and technology infrastructure, the status quo, or worse, going backwards will hurt our children, and by the way, there's no big pot of money hidden in gatehouse, either literally or figuratively. There's a technique in the stock market to make money when stocks fall, it's called selling short. That technique has no place in our public schools. When you underfund the schools, when you refuse to ask for the resources we all know we need to help our kids succeed, you're selling us, you're selling them, you're selling our community short. Do not sell us short. At a minimum, adopt Dr. Garza's proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. It's great to hear your voice again. Next is Virginia Fitzshea, to be followed by Helen Kelly and Margaret Panic. Ms. Fitzshea.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Garza. I believe that we need to improve the school schedules for our students. We need to provide later high school start times. Your consultants are studying several bell options right now. I recommend that you ask them for the lowest-cost option and budget for that right now. Also, our elementary school schedules are inadequate. We need to reschedule the elementary school day and week. Eliminate Monday early dismissals. Provide a uniform school day of six hours and 40 minutes each day for the students. Do not cut the number of instructional assistants, increase them. Increase the number of physical education teachers. Provide the students with 90 minutes of physical education each week. Keep your current FLESS teachers, but allow the classroom teachers to have planning time during the foreign language class. For schools that don't have FLESS, give them the option to add it, or add 60 minutes of instruction by some other specialist in either reading, math, science, or a subject of their choosing. And all of this should allow to provide a minimum of five hours per week within the student day of planning for all full-time teachers. Now, in order to do this, we need to get a little more money within the budget. First, I recommend eliminating the Priority Schools initiative. Second, I recommend increasing the decrease of number of, what do we call it? Needs-based staffing. Currently, the decrease is 12 and 1/2 million. I think it could be further decreased by another 12 and 1/2 million and applied across the board for better schedules for all the students. All the students will benefit from having an adequate staffing to have an adequate schedule that is not substandard. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Helen Kelly, to be followed by Margaret Panic and Anthony Portori.
Good evening, Mr. Velkoff, members of the board and Superintendent Garza. I'm Helen Kelly, co-president of the League of Women Voters of the Fairfax area. I speak on behalf of our members throughout Fairfax County. We would like to commend you, Dr. Garza, and your staff for the excellent publication, Citizen's Guide to the Budget. This booklet makes the school budget process much more understandable and transparent. We also applaud your effort to balance the fiscal year 2015 budget through a combination of cost reductions, revenue enhancements, and transfer increases. We understand your need to request the proposed increase in the county transfer. Given the current economic situation, however, we doubt that the Board of Supervisors will adopt the five-cent tax increase necessary to fund the increased transfer. We urge you to seek additional combinations of revenue increases and cost reductions to allow for a more realistic increase in the tax rate. If additional reductions need to be made, we urge you to preserve these two budget items: $41 million for teacher step increases. These increases will help keep our experienced teachers in Fairfax County classrooms and kindergarten instructional assistants. These kindergarten teachers' aides provide necessary support for our youngest and least self-sufficient students. We are very pleased that many of you on the school board are pursuing later start times for all high schools and middle schools. The League believes that delaying the start of classes for these students will promote student learning and improve student health and safety. We support cost-effective later start times and hope to see them implemented, at least in some schools, in September 2014. We appreciate the efforts you have made to maintain a high-quality educational system while facing the twin challenges of higher increasing enrollment and funding that cannot keep pace with the student population. Should it be necessary to reduce teachers' salaries, we recommend a furlough rather than a contract-length change. And we believe the continued examination of all budget options will yield the best fiscal solution for these difficult times. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight and for your continuing efforts to improve the services that Fairfax County offers to its students.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Next is Margaret Panic, followed by Anthony Portori and Ralph Cooper. Ms. Panic.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Panic. As vice president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers, I'm here speaking tonight for the instructional assistant members of FCFT. Fairness and equality, doing what is just and good. Our society values it. We teach our kids about it. We know that it is right, and injustice is wrong. Well, there's an injustice within the FCPS budget every year, and I'm here again to ask you to correct it. It has to do with the lack of education credit for instructional assistance. IAs and teachers work in concert with each other to make sure students understand concepts. Instructional assistants are critical to the classroom, essential to teachers, and, most importantly, vital to students. Ask teachers and students. They will tell you that we are partners in the learning process and in student success, even stepping in numerous days to serve in the teacher's role while the teacher attends tasks. Even though we work side-by-side with teachers, when it comes to recognizing our educational credentials, IAs lack equality, where a teacher receives salary credit for advancing her education and IA does not. Both positions have minimal hiring requirements, but a teacher is compensated for going above the minimal bachelor's degree. We see this through several teacher salary scales. There's the minimal requirement for the bachelor's scale, then there is the bachelor's plus 15, the bachelor's plus 30, the master's degree, the master's plus 30, and the PhD scale, all for teachers. Even national board-certified teachers receive a salary enhancement. As an IA, I can hold a master's degree in education but receive the same pay as another IA hired off the street without any experience. I can meet the distinction of being highly qualified by federal standards but be paid at the same rate as an IA who is not. How is this right? Why do we continue to do this? Budget after budget, year after year, FCPS does nothing to address this. Every year, it's some other groups turn. Every year, there's a bigger priority. Every year, there's a crisis. Well, when will you fix this? All we ask is fairness and to be equitable with our colleagues. We need you to do what is right and resolve this injustice. Add educational salary credit for IAs in this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anthony Portori, Ralph Cooper, and Martina Hohn. Ralph Cooper, is Ralph Cooper here? All right, then we are grazed by the presence of a second emeritus, former at-large member Martina Hohn.
Thank you. Dr. Garza, school board members and staff, as a former school board member and as the founder and chair of the Coalition of the Silence, I have struggled mightily with this testimony. COT wants to show our support for you and the school system, but we must be honest. We are troubled by the advertised budget, not just in terms of the programs that have been cut, but in terms of the significance of your decisions to cut them. In striking the balance on this budget, we simply do not understand how needs-based staffing and summer school could fall on the cut side of the balance. Did you think we would be silent? You may not realize it, but COT's kids are the largest stakeholder group in this county. Socioeconomically disadvantaged kids, Black and Latino kids, are at the heart of COT's, and they are more than a third of your student body. That's about 60,000 students. COT's kids collectively are a bigger stakeholder group than teachers, principals, the various community groups that advocate for programs like foreign language in elementary school, band and string, sports, advanced academic programs. Just as those groups are a force to be reckoned with, so too is COT's. We know you did not want to propose any cuts, but the fact is, you did, and the programs you chose are very important to COT's. As much as we like and respect you and are happy that you are here, we cannot give you a pass tonight. Even Jack didn't cut needs-based staffing. COT understands that it is your first budget, and as a new superintendent, it is important for you to keep the community united behind you. We understand that you needed to restore- We understand that you needed to restore faith with key stakeholder groups, especially the teachers and staff who were unfairly treated in the past, but you needed to restore faith with COT's, too. COT's watched helplessly as program after program directed at COT's kids was cut in previous budgets. Among the most heartbreaking and shortsighted of the cuts was the dismantling of Excel with its full-day Mondays and modified calendars for needy kids. This was done under the guise of budget shortfall, and it was a guise, because the money didn't disappear. It just got sent somewhere else, to the Priority Schools Initiative. The sleight of hand surrounding this PSI contributed significantly to the fractured relationship that persists between this school board and the Board of Supervisors today, and it was a tremendous breach of faith with the COT's community. It continues to hurt COT's kids today. Our kids needed that time in school, they still do. Dr. Garza, you inherited a mess. We know that. But please, we cannot fix this mess on the back of COT's kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hohn.
Okay, it's my turn to take over. For anybody that's paying attention to the numbers, we're on number 41. And I'll just remind folks, each speaker is allotted three minutes, and we ask that you stay within that time limit. And for those of you who signed up for one of the five reserved speaker slots, your name will be called after the registered speakers. There will also be an opportunity for individuals to speak if there are no-show speaker slots remaining at the end of this hearing. Now we are up to number 41, Michael Everett.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Everett, and I am a member of COT's. COT stands tonight in support of your overall funding level request for FY15 budget. However, we have some concerns about programs that are not included in the request. COT's wants to restore full Mondays and modify calendars for Title I schools. Until 2010, these programs provided extra layers of support to some of Fairfax County's neediest students. Despite its success, the program was cut in the budget ostensibly to save $8.1 million. But the money was not really cut, it was shifted to Priority Schools Initiatives, or PSI. Becoming a PSI school was not based on socioeconomic factors. Consequently, some very challenged Title I schools lost funding for extended Monday and modified calendar while less needy schools gained PSI. Results of the PSI experiment today is really not that clear. A 2011 Washington Post article that you have attached to this testimony covers the loss of extended learning. The headline suggests the decision to cut modified calendar in summer school was a sound one, but did not change the achievement gap and the impact of schools. But if you read the entire article carefully and peel back to Onion, each of the seven schools that lost full-day Mondays saw a drop in reading scores. Three schools actually did not make AYP. The only outlier was the Graham Road experiment. But read that part of the story carefully, too. You'll find that the new principal at Graham Road actually made extensive use of extended time. He put in place after-school study sessions that the kids and the community loved. He used his Title I money not for extra teachers during the school year, but to fund summer school. He kept the miracle of Graham Road alive by providing extended learning days and summer intercession. So far, from proving that full-day Mondays and modified calendars aren't needed, Graham Road actually proves how effective extended time is. COT supports your overall budget funding request. However, we want that $8.1 million that was shifted to PSI shifted back to extended Mondays. We want the money back in the classroom, helping our neediest students close the achievement gap through full Monday and modified calendar. Researchers have found that boosting annual learning time from 300 hours was one of the strongest predictors of higher achievement. For all of these reasons, we urge you to restore in your advertised budget the full-day Mondays and modified calendars in the Title I schools. Thank you, Dr. Garza. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Everett. Louise Epstein, followed by Caroline Hemingway and Sandy Knox.
Good evening. My name is Louise Epstein, and tonight I'm speaking as the chair of the bipartisan Fairfax Education Coalition. We advocate for improved public engagement, accountability, and transparency, and our members are described in our written testimony and on our website. First, we want to applaud the much-improved public engagement this year, including the online survey. Dr. Garza actually read the responses. And the listening tours, where Dr. Garza responded to questions with an honest analysis of competing considerations. Of course, there are always improvement opportunities. One, why don't you guys ask questions when people testify? That's what the supervisors do. And two, why don't you ask staff to summarize some of tonight's testimony, so you have it when you do your budget work session? Our written testimony also describes how federal and state agencies adopt regulations, and I think Fairfax County Public Schools would benefit from using similar procedures. On accountability, you recently voted to hire two more internal auditors and a consultant to do a risk assessment. This is a step in the right direction, but it does not cure deficiencies in the audit committee structure, and it also fails to address longstanding concerns about the lack of a truly independent analysis of programs. To be generally, genuinely independent, an employee must serve at the pleasure of the school board, not be hired through a process where managers decide which applicants can be interviewed. Supervisors, civic associations, the FEC, and some of you have expressed concerns about this. We hope the elimination of the vacant school board office position will not be used in the future to justify continued resistance to more substantive reforms. On transparency, we also saw significant improvements. First, budget documents had links to other documents. Two lists of plausible budget cuts were discussed at work sessions, and they were recorded. Agendas were updated to add links to those recordings, and a new transparency tool on the website allows people to now compare approved to actual expenses. That's all great. In addition, Slide 34 of Dr. Garza's PowerPoint, combined expenses from all 10 FCPS funds. That was a fabulous achievement. It allocated them among four informative categories, and with a little bit of pre-algebra, people could figure out that Fairfax County Public Schools actually has a $2.9 billion budget, that central support costs $220 million, that division-wide support costs $350 million, that school support costs $570 million, and that the classroom expenses are $1.8 billion. These are some great changes, but there is always more that can be done. One idea is to aggregate costs from all 10 funds for all future budget documents. Another is to take those total costs and then allocate them among those four categories in Slide 34. And the third is to then reconcile that with the categories in the state-mandated annual report on expenditures. Overall, we want to commend you for all the improvements that have been made over the past six months, and we look forward to further improvements in public engagement, transparency, and accountability. Thank you.
Caroline Hemingway, followed by Sandy Knox and Mariana Dubosk.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Moon, Dr. Garza, members of the Board. I'm a founding member of the FEC, but I'm here tonight on behalf of Fairfax Zero Tolerance Reform and Sleep, but more important, on behalf of their family, of the students, their families, and their teachers. I'm here to ask you to prioritize this budget for the well-being and education of children above everything else, above our own adult conveniences, our own desires, our own adult challenges. Most of all, prioritize for mental, emotional, and physical health that make basic education even possible, that allow math and reading to happen at all, and civilized behavior to be instilled. Basics we're not providing right now, today, and can. I'm talking about ensuring our children have the sleep they need when they need it and are treated with the respect they deserve at all times. Without those two things, everything falls apart. I want to connect some dots for you based on loads of research you already know, dots that even affect you personally, because connecting these dots can save money and lives. Sleep deprivation. It ages our skin, makes us forgetful, makes us gain weight, dumbs us down, leads to serious health problems, contributes to depression, causes accidents, increases our risks for death from all causes, and impairs our judgment, moral and otherwise. Dot two, lack of judgment. This leads to cheating, bullying, defiance, truancy, traffic accidents, drug use, all the things we crowd under the term discipline and tear into our children about with formal punishments. Dot three, depression. This leads to self-medication by drug use, defiance, even suicide. Dot four, brain development. Prefrontal lobes responsible for judgment are not fully mature until age 25, and hormonal development is out of your control, no matter how brilliant you are. Dot five, sleep cycles. Teens are forced awake too early, and younger children are kept at school too late by adult-created school schedules that defy normal sleep cycles and peak learning times. Kids have no power over this. And finally, dot six, we are responsible. We make our children sleep deprived and then punish them for things they can't control, and this isn't treating our children with respect. Nothing about any of this is nurturing or educational or intelligent. Give our teachers rested students to teach, so they're not retraining tired and misbehaving kids. This by itself will save money. Give our young ones a better shot at retaining information, driving safely, behaving better, winning games, and positively influencing the world. This saves lives. A root solution to a root cause is staring us in our drowsy faces. Make sure this budget gives us smart school start times for all 185,000 bright, deserving, and respected students. Thank you.
All right, we have Sandy Knox, followed by Mariana Dubosk and Paula Patrick.
I had a cough, so I hope I won't get choked up up here. Good evening. My name is Sandy Knox, and I'm one of the co-organizers of Fairfax Flags. Our group formed over four years ago during the FY2011 budget year. That year, we brought out over 100 parents, students, and community members with compelling testimony to the school board in support of our elementary world language programs. We also joined forces with other advocacy groups at the county and state levels. There is no denying that this current budget outlook is one of the worst we've seen, especially if the county does not fully fund our schools. One-time monies have been spent, and increased and unfunded student enrollments, changing demographics, and the rising costs of healthcare and retirement have put a huge strain on our school system. Our employees deserve and need more compensation, and no one wants to see larger class size. We appreciate Dr. Garza's engagement with the community to better understand our school system and develop this budget. I was one of over 70 people who served on the portrait of a graduate committee. I know you were presented with the results of our work this past weekend. I was pleased that time and time again, the people in this group mentioned the importance of being a global citizen and being able to communicate in other languages. Not once in that setting did anyone debate this need for our graduates. Dr. Garza has put forth a responsible budget that the community, school board, and county supervisors should support. Unfortunately, we realize if the requested funding doesn't come through, our schools will face even more reductions. At our last BCAC meeting, Dr. Garza explained that she and her staff were careful not to cut student programming in this budget, and we encourage you to do the same. She also pointed out that while she doesn't want to take programs away from students, we can't go on at the current enrollment and funding levels and not look at specific programs more closely in the coming years. Some of that work has already begun. I'm glad to be participating in a new FCPS work group tasked to develop a division-wide strategic plan for K-12 world language implementation and international offerings to all students. The work group's report and recommendations will be given to the school board in June. By that time, you will have already voted on this budget. We know when times are tough, you have to look everywhere for cost savings. Some of you may not be sold on the FLESS program. However, before considering cuts to a program serving nearly 26,000 of our young students, we urge you to wait for the FCPS recommendations. With kids in the pipeline and a work group in progress, it would seem premature and a waste of those resources already invested to cut a program without having another solid plan in place, especially if the school board is truly committed to our student achievement goals and the portrait of an FCPS graduate. The bottom line is that we understand that the real issue here is to get more funding for our schools. We shouldn't have these exhausting budget challenges year after year. As school supporters, we will actively work towards this goal. As always, thank you for your time and service.
Thank you, Ms. Knox. Mariana Dubosk, followed by Paula Patrick and Lori Signo.
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Mariana Dubosk, and I'm here representing the Coalition of the Silence. As a former ESAL student who was once left behind by another school system, I have made it my personal mission to support students and families in similar situations. My parents migrated to this country searching for the American dream. Education was at the top of their list. But as an ESAL student, my siblings and I were placed in a trailer in the back of our school, where rather than learning English, our teachers spoke Spanish to us and showed movies every day because it was an easy thing to do. Sixth, seventh, and eighth graders were packed into one classroom that became more of a holding cell than a place of learning. My parents and I knew that it wasn't right, and at the most basic level, we're being denied a full and fair education. Yet we felt helpless. We were new to this country, did not know how to navigate the public school system, let alone how to advocate for our needs or those of fellow students and families. I'm here to speak up for parents in Fairfax who are like mine were, wanting every opportunity for their children but not knowing how to advocate for them. For these parents, I say the proposed budget must include more funding for programs that level the playing field and close the achievement gap. I recognize that the 5.7% increase in funding you're requesting from the Board of Supervisors is brave and bold, but for these kids, I'm asking you to be braver and bolder. Your proposed budget makes cuts to both needs-based staffing and summer school, programs many of COT's students significantly depend upon. As a former educator, these cuts seem like a big mistake. I can personally attest to the benefits that summer school provides to students, especially students that are performing below grade level, and I worry about the lost learning opportunities that will result from not fully following this valuable program. The budget also does not include any funding to restore full-day Mondays in Title I schools, which seems should be a priority for all Fairfax County schools. I realize that given the tight fiscal constraints you face, tough calls had to be made. However, I cannot help but be concerned that FCPS currently faces significant disparities in terms of academic achievement and high student growth among our neediest population. Yet the FY15 budget either cuts programs designed to close the achievement gap or does not fund them at all. We have to stand together to protect the school system. That includes closing the achievement gap. Let's take advantage of the opportunity and ensure that we can get enough funding from the Board of Supervisors, so we can undo some of the painful cuts that were made to programs that support COT's kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Patrick, followed by Lori Signo and Jennifer Cesara.
Good evening. I'm Paula Patrick, former coordinator of world languages for Fairfax County Public Schools. I'm here tonight to bring attention to a crisis our country is facing in hopes that the Board will continue to support K-12 language programs that give our students the tools needed to be competitive in an ever-demanding job market they will face. The United States currently faces a critical gap in language competence that impacts American competitiveness and national security, yet less than 10% of Americans speak a foreign language. Only 18% of K-12 students study a language, and for an average of only two years. Just 8% of college students study a foreign language, and only 1% graduate with a language major. With businesses increasingly dependent on export, languages are a crucial 21st-century workplace skill. 47% of businesses reported planning to hire bilingual workers in 2013, up 8% from 2011. Language is among the top most encountered impediments to trade and among businesses. Government also cites unmet demand for skilled language speakers. It's reported that less than 10% of Department of Defense's military service personnel speak a foreign language. a foreign language. A quarter of the State Department's language-designated positions were not adequately staffed in 2012. In 2009, the CIA reported that only 13% of the CIA workforce knew another language. While English is the most commonly-used language of business, it does not hold a monopoly. Multinational understanding of changing markets will favor multilingual workers, and this will stiffen the competition for jobs, putting monolingual Americans at a total disadvantage. Proficiency in a language other than English represents a vital skill in an increasing number of functions and roles across virtually every sector of the economy. It takes a well-articulated sequence of language instruction starting in elementary school to develop a high level of proficiency. Similar to math, we would not expect our students to excel in calculus if they just started math in eighth grade. Our students will not have a chance to compete for jobs in the near future if they're not proficient in a foreign language. Please give all students the tools to compete and do not consider cutting any language program regardless of the model. They are recognized nationally as well as internationally and are exactly what our government and our business leaders say we are needed to prepare the students for the future. I'll close with a quote from Arnie Duncan. "The United States is a long ways from being the multilingual society that so many of our economic competitors are today. Today, more than ever, a world-class education requires students to be able to speak and read languages in addition to English." Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Signo, followed by Jennifer Schara and Kira Finkler.
Dear ladies and gentlemen of the Board, thank you for your time. I'm here today to express my support for the continued funding of FLESS program and keeping money in the classrooms. My children were lucky enough to be at a school that had FLESS, and then due to boundary changes moved to a school that was not part of FLESS. Two years ago, my then-third-grade daughter and I spoke to the Board in support of additional FLESS schools, and we felt extremely fortunate. The school was then added to the FLESS program the following year and have truly enjoyed watching it blossom at our school. FLESS does not require a classroom. The FLESS teacher comes to the students' classroom. FLESS reinforces classroom content and the core subjects while teaching foreign language. One only has to look at the county's own website to see why FLESS is a program that not only needs to remain but should be increased to all county schools. It is a program that falls in direct line with the mission statement that Fairfax County Public Schools inspires and empowers students to meet high academic standards, lead ethical lives, and be responsible and innovative global citizens. I urge the school board to keep the money on direct educational programming and on keeping quality teachers in the classroom. While I agree with the admission of sleep, I'm frustrated to see the 143,000 spent on the study of it when money's tight. When I look at the slides presented to the Board from the initial report and note that the study is going to take longer than expected and may need more funding to see if it's even plausible, the county is presenting to parents the need to make deep cuts that increase classroom size and cut valuable direct educational programs and remove classroom positions. If you're going to change the start times, do it, but to see one more dollar spent on the study when you're making deep cuts that affect every student would be an insult all around. This expenditure was easy to read about in the newspaper, but it makes me wonder where else money is being spent in the county schools and why. And when its parents were being told belts need to be tightened and direct impact funding cuts on students need to be made, expenditures like this study makes me angry and distrustful of you as a Board. My husband and I are active parents. We support our teachers, volunteer at our school, and in the community. We're both products of the exemplary Fairfax County School System and proud of that fact. My husband's a business owner, and we make the choice to stay here because we've always felt our children have received a high-quality education. It's my primary concern as a mother. But in seeing the cuts suggested, looking where dollars are being spent, and looking at the possible path the county's headed down, I'm putting options on the table for the first time, and I'm not the only one else looking elsewhere. I ask you to look at programs like FLESS and really understand that their low cost, high benefit, make them a need and not a luxury. They improve test scores and, most importantly, make a large impact directly on students immediately and for the long run. Simply keep the money focused on the classroom content, classroom size, and our teachers, and you keep our faith. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Schara, followed by Kira Finkler and Elizabeth Guzmati.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Shahara, and I have three daughters in the Fairfax County Public School System: a fourth grader at Greenbrier West, a first grader at Brookfield, and a kindergartner who will be attending Brookfield next year. I've come to speak with you this evening because my children's education is very important to me. This is my very first time at a school board meeting, and I appreciate the opportunity to express to you all my feelings. I have two concerns about our current budget crisis. One is providing the proper compensation to our teachers, and two is supporting our elementary world language programs. First, let me share that I am a happy parent who is pleased with the educational experience that my children receive at their schools. Every day when I drop my children off at school, I am comforted knowing that my girls are in the hands of talented and nurturing teachers who are educating and caring for them throughout the day. These are the good years for my girls, the innocent days of elementary school when the joy of learning is instilled in their hearts and in their minds by their teachers. I am so happy that they have the teachers that they have, and I am so happy that they are receiving a world-class education in Fairfax County, and I am thrilled that both of the schools that they attend have FLESS programs. With this in mind, I ask that you please do all that you possibly can to financially compensate and reward our educators who are doing so much for our children. Fairfax County must provide competitive salaries for its educators in order to keep the quality teachers that we have and to attract some new ones, because as we all know and believe, effective educators are essential to student success. Second, I would like to bring attention to the importance of continuing our elementary world language programs. I'd like to thank you, Dr. Garza, for keeping that in our proposed budget. I know that these are programs that have been at risk in the past and that they may be at risk again if our schools are not fully funded. This concerns me greatly. I care very much about this program, and I can see every day how it's making a difference in the lives of my children, and I know how important it is to them for their future. The school board's commitment to having all students graduate with the ability to communicate in at least two languages is an educational goal that I find imperative in providing a proper education to all of our youth. I appreciate very much that FLESS has become a part of my children's curriculum, and I encourage you to do all that you can to continue it. Fairfax County Public Schools have always been cited as one of the best schools in the nation, but my fear as a parent is that if we don't retain quality educators and we don't provide world language instruction to all of our students, then it may be the first step in becoming ordinary and not the best. And I want us to be the best. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Kira Finkler and Elizabeth Guzmati.
Good evening, Chairman Moon and school board members and Dr. Garza. My name is Kira Finkler, and I'm here to comment on two items in the budget. First, I respectfully request that your number-one overarching priority be avoiding class size increases, and second, I thank you for including a step increase for teachers and other employees. Two of my children currently attend Kent Gardens. My oldest daughter, who's a recent college graduate, also attended Fairfax County Public Schools. I moved to this county in 1995 because of its high-quality schools. Like me, I heard many speakers state they also moved to Fairfax County because of the schools during one of Dr. Garza's recent listening sessions at Cooper. Property values are high, in part because of the schools. In her recent State of the County remarks, Chair Bolovas stated that the supervisors consider education, quote, "our highest priority and our greatest investment," close quote. Your number-one priority should be to avoid class size increases because classes that are too large will harm the quality of our schools. On a related note, should you receive additional funds from the state, I respectfully request that avoiding class size increases be the first priority for use of such funds. The budget seems to indicate that should you receive these additional funds, eliminating the proposed fees for AP exams would receive the highest consideration. I urge you to consider shuffling the priorities so that avoiding class size increases stand as the highest priority for use of any additional funds. Finally, thank you for including a step increase for employees. Our teachers are our greatest asset. I also would like to thank Board Member Strauss for coming to a recent PTA meeting at our school to discuss the budget and answer questions. Thank you all for your time, and thank you for serving on the school board.
Thank you. Elizabeth Guzmati.
My name is Liz Guzmati, and I have a sixth and third grader at Navy Elementary. Every day, we're thankful for the high-quality education that they receive. It is the reason that we moved to Fairfax County. My daughters are in their sixth and third years of the FLESS program. I'm aware that this program has been at risk in the past, and I have strongly advocated for the program over the past several years. I have closely followed Fairfax County's difficult budget situation and fully understand the challenges that you face. I am here to personally thank you for having recognized through FLESS and immersion the importance of teaching children foreign languages at a young age. Thank you for including them in the budget next year. For kids who can't enroll in immersion or who don't speak another language at home, FLESS is their only opportunity for foreign language instruction unless they pay for expensive private instruction. I am also a strong supporter of band and strings, special education, and of course, pay increases for our teachers. As we are all concerned about the possibility of cuts to the Fairfax County Public School budget, I intend to support FCPS by asking that the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors honor the school board's request for a 5.7% increase in the county transfer. If we don't receive those funds and face the possibility of further budget cuts, I would ask that you consider them carefully and where possible, ensure that comparable solutions are in place before cuts are made. Thank you again for recognizing the importance of FLESS and world languages in our elementary schools. FLESS is one of the programs that sets Fairfax County apart from other highly-regarded school systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Wanted to go through our list one more time. Is anyone here who was signed up on the speakers list that has arrived late? No, okay. Then we'll go with the additional sign-ups, starting with Sarah Brenner. To be followed by Linda DeLeon and Tina. I'm not sure how to say this, and I don't want to offend someone again. How would you say that, Mr. Velco?
Chopeck.
Chopeck.
My name is Sarah Brenner. I have a few students in Fairfax County schools. Thank you very much for letting everyone come here and voice all these different opinions. It's pretty impressive to hear how many things you have to juggle. But the reason I came is because I had an interesting conversation with my son, who graduated last June from TJ High School in Fairfax County. And I just wanted to share that story. It concerns the sleep issue. My son loved school, loves it still, very excited to go to college, took a very heavy load. He's out at Caltech in California. Better weather, for sure. In any case, he got there this fall, and I waited a couple of weeks, and then I had a very long phone conversation with him, and I said, "Tell me all about it. What do you like? What's going on? What do you miss? What does he miss?" Well, he missed his Nerf guns, because apparently there are epic Nerf gun battles on Friday night. But the thing that brings him the most joy, the thing he is the most happy about, the thing that really was a relief, burden off his shoulders, is that he said he's in college and he can get, for the first time in five or six years, eight hours of sleep. No classes before nine o'clock. Who knows what time he's staying up till? I'm sure there are nights he stays up all night. But the point is, is that he feels rested. He said, "What a difference this makes." And I don't know if you ever talked to students who've left Fairfax County to ask them about all these different issues. Did they care that they were in a trailer? Probably not. Did it matter if there were 28 or 32 students? It might really bother the teachers, but I'm not sure the students care that much. But he definitely appreciates this feeling of being rested and having a little control over how he spends his day and when he studies and when he sleeps. I have a daughter who's still at McLean High School. She gets five or six hours a night. She's a good student. She's not watching TV or goofing off. She's doing her studies, but she does play sports. And the sports start 7:00, 7:30 for matches and practices. She has no control over this. They're gonna, she's gonna get home at 10:00 or 10:30 almost every night. She's competing against schools. All her friends are in Arlington teams and Loudon teams. They get one or two extra hours of sleep. And it's not just the kids who do sports. We had a dancer here earlier. We've got kids in band. We want them to be well-rounded students. We want to encourage them to try music and theater. Kids, they're always at school late. We want them to be well-rounded. We want them to do well at school. We want them to be good citizens and participate in the community and have these volunteer hours and do these leadership things. And you're asking them, especially in a year with all these budget cuts, to endure the janitor cuts, the building charges. We want them to put up with all of these cuts and losses of programs. So give them the hour of sleep. Give them a better night's sleep. I think the science studies have supported it, and the students support it. So that's just my story, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Linda DeLeon, followed by Tina Chopeck.
I'm speaking in behalf of Antonio Bravo that couldn't attend. So, good evening, Honorable School Board Members, Dr. Garza, and staff. My name is Antonio Bravo. I am the proud father of Olivia Bravo, 10th grader at McLean High School, and Antonio C. Bravo, 7th grader at Longfellow Middle School in Falls Church. I am also the assistant varsity softball coach at Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology in Alexandria. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to share with you my thoughts on the proposed FCPS school budget and its potential impact on the neediest students and their families in our school district. I am a first-generation Mexican-American born and raised in El Paso, Texas. As a product of an inner-city school district, I learned early in life that educational opportunities were not always equitably distributed across school districts. I also learned early that those who transcended educational obstacles usually had access to support systems. Fortunately, I found a support system through my older brothers and sisters and a safe harbor through the temptations of the street provided by after-school clubs, summer school, and athletic programs. These support systems led me away from the streets of El Paso to the halls of the University of Southern California and subsequently onto the graduate school in Nebraska. The skills acquired led me toward a professional career as a United Nations diplomat and a civil servant in the federal government. My family understood the importance of education, but as immigrants from Mexico, they never felt empowered to step up to the podium and express their needs and wants, nor articulate the dreams they had for a better life for their children. So instead, my parents, like many others in our neighborhoods, packaged their children every morning, sent them to school, fully trusting that decision-makers like you would make the best decisions on their behalf. My parents were the silent voices, rarely heard at school board meetings, and I vow to speak on behalf of these silent voices someday. As a parent, member of the Parent Teachers Association, and as a high school coach, I frequently encounter families and students who are in need of these vital support systems, needed to help transcend economic and social advantages. As a parent, I recognize many advantaged and opportunities that FCPS affords my children. They're essentially limited only by their own initiatives, but my children have a parent who is engaged in their academic endeavors and who advocates for their behalf. So this testimony is to advocate for those silent voices rarely heard at their board meetings. I urge you to fully consider the potential impact of your proposed budget on those support systems vital to those needing and advantaged students and their families within our community. Consider the impact of cutting summer school funding can have on these students. Consider the impact on the students from cutting back on after-school clubs, instructional programs, and sporting activities. In closing, I served on the school board in my hometown for 18 years. I know what it's like, a budget cuts. I know the decisions that you have to make, but I also know that I was a very vocal advocate for those that had no voice, like this dad. And the testimony, I've been very impressed since 6:00, listening to the testimony before you. It's like the Super Bowl. I see y'all as all the coaches. This is your team. The students are your team, and we want you to win in their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tina Chopeck.
Excuse me, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I wasn't planning on speaking. Welcome, Dr. Garza, from Texas. I had asked Dr. Jack Dale to resign. I had asked Dr. Jack Dale to resign, so I was really happy that he didn't renew his contract or didn't have to stay. I have to confess. My name's Tina Chopek. I'm a registered nurse at Fairfax Hospital, and we've lived in Fairfax County since 2000. I want you to know that we have three children. They are 11 in the 6th grade at Wakefield Forest Elementary, they're 14 in 8th grade at Frost Middle School, and 16 going on 17. And she's supposed to be at Woodson High School. She went to Woodson for the first two years, but this year, we have removed her from Fairfax County schools for lack of confidence in Fairfax County Schools' ability to educate her due to her special education needs and also due to lack of sleep. For a child who has special education needs caused her to become very depressed and actually suicidal over the summer, and so we put her in a school that starts an hour later, and what a difference in her emotional status and academic performance by getting an additional hour of sleep, also being educated in a school with smaller class sizes. So what I want you to know is I want to advocate for the sleep organization, and that I have been advocating for the sleep organization for years, and I would like to second the opinion or the comment that was made in the past about, "Please stop spending any more funds researching the sleep initiative. Please just pass it. Make it work." I know that you have a comptroller now from Loudon County working in Fairfax County. They know how to make it happen. Please just let it happen for once and stop spending any more money on any research trying to redo the whole busing situation. It can, it will work. I think the elementary students could go earlier and let the high school and middle students go later. I want you to know that in terms of, I want to revisit this, you know, until the 6th grade, our older daughter, who has the most severe learning disabilities, she did just fine because she had adequate sleep, she was in small class environments. Apparently, there is an economic disparity between Wakefield Forest and the other school. We have not had class sizes larger than 26, and we normally have class sizes somewhere around 22 to 24. So where in the world the economic disparity happened between our Braddock District and the child who went to school with 38 students? I cannot believe that that actually happened in Fairfax County, and I don't understand where the economic disparity occurred, but that needs to be clearly addressed. But, you know, she, back to our daughter, until 6th grade, she was fine, but once she went into middle school and high school, she wasn't fine, and it's been downhill ever since, and you'll get a nice letter from me about the IEP process pretty soon, Dr. Garza. So, thank you very much for my opinions.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for participating in tonight's public hearing. We have just exhausted all the speakers who have signed up to speak, but that does not mean that we're not, you know, seeking, well, we're not welcoming a further input from public. You can continue sending us emails until we are all done with this, which is not going to be until the second meeting in May, but let me give you immediate a budget deliberation schedule for the public. We have a budget work session on this Thursday night at 7:00. We will be on TV right at Luther Jackson. We start at 7:00. You're welcome to come, or you're welcome to watch us on Channel 21, and I fully expect board members to bring, you know, whatever amendments they have on their mind for discussion at the work session on Thursday night, and formal a submission of a budget amendments will be due on the next day. And Friday, we vote on the proposed budget at the first meeting in February, which will be February 6, which is next Thursday. With that, this public hearing is adjourned. Yes?
I have a little bit of trouble hearing, but did we go through the, also the corresponding schedule of activities that the supervisors will be going through?
Oh, we have not.
I'm sorry. So they have a, they go through a period of adopting the advertised tax rate, and then...
Mr. Velco, you want to address that?
I don't have the dates with me. Thank you. Mr. Moon, thank you for bearing with me.
I mean, I can read this, what's on my iPad, if that's what you're looking for. February 25 is when Fairfax County Executive releases FY 2015 advertised budget plan, and March 4 is when County Board of Supervisors advertises tax rate, and that is one of the most critical date, because once they set the tax rate, they cannot go beyond that. So if you are advocating for full funding or adequate funding for the public school system or anywhere, you need to, you need to make sure that the, you know, the Board of Supervisors set the tax rate high enough for everybody to be able to consider all the Thank you. With that, this public hearing is really adjourned.